Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. And we'll call up Mr. Pastor Nelson for our invocation.
It's a privilege to pray for this council and for the city of Los Banos. I'm pastor emeritus of St. John's Lutheran Church. Retired, but still pray to God, to our Lord. We give you thanks, Heavenly Father, for the citizens of Los Banos, who worked to provide goods and services for our people, and who worked to nourish, educate, and protect our children. We give you thanks for people willing to serve on this city council and in the offices of our city. Give them guidance and wisdom to serve with eagerness, joy, and integrity. Grant the inspiration of your Holy Spirit, that we may make decisions that are just and beneficial for our city and for our people. May we all seek the welfare of this community, motivate us to dedicate ourselves wholeheartedly to our tasks and assignments. God of mercy and justice, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons with love and respect. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. We will now call the meeting to order at 6:02. And we'll ask for Police Chief Breezy.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Mellon? Here.
Here.
We have a quorum. We'll move to next item. Item four, the consideration approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Ms. Lewis.
Yes, Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. No opposed? All right. Agenda has been approved. Next, we'll go to presentations. And I got several here. And we'll come down to the podium there. Call them up one at a time. All right, this is going to be a proclamation. And do we have Mary Lou Gilardi? Gilardi? Proclamation recognizing the retirement of the City of Los Banos Administrative Coordinator, Mary Lou Gilardi. Whereas, Mary Lou Gilardi was hired as a clerk typist by the City of Los Banos on May 16, 1990. And whereas, Mary Lou Gilardi worked in and promoted through multiple capacities within the city during her career, including lead clerk on February 16, 1996, planning lead clerk on July 1, 1997, fire lead clerk on July 1, 1998, administrative assistant on July 1, 2005, then administrative coordinator on July 1, 2017. And whereas, Mary Lou Gilardi has contributed tremendously throughout her career to the community of Los Banos with her knowledge and commitment to her job. And whereas, Mary Lou Gilardi retired from the City of Los Banos as administrative coordinator on August 25, 2022, with 32 years of service as a city employee. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the City of Los Banos do hereby commend Mary Lou Gilardi on her dedication and loyalty to the City of Los Banos and congratulate her on her retirement. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation was presented to Mary Lou Gilardi of the city council meeting held on September 21, 2022. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Los Banos the 21st day of September, 2022. Roger Hughes. This proclamation is recognizing the retirement of the City of Los Banos Fire Captain Roger Hughes. Whereas, Roger Hughes was hired as a part-time maintenance worker by the City of Los Banos on June 29, 1998. He promoted through the ranks in the Public Works Department as a street maintenance worker one on March 1, 1999, then as a utilities maintenance worker one on November 19, 2001. And whereas, of July 11, 2001, Roger Hughes become a volunteer firefighter for the City of and was hired as a full-time firefighter on January 16, 2003. From there, he promoted through the ranks as a fire engineer on July 1, 2006, then as a fire captain on March 1, 2015. And whereas, Roger Hughes has contributed tremendously throughout his career to the community of Los Banos with his knowledge and commitment to his job. And whereas, Roger Hughes retired from the City of Los Banos as fire captain on September 16, 2022, with 24 years of service as a city employee. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the City of Los Banos do hereby commend Roger Hughes on his dedication and loyalty to the City of Los Banos and congratulate him on his retirement. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation was presented to Roger Hughes of the city council meeting held on September 21, 2022. It is witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Los Banos the 21st day of September, 2022. I have here accepting Captain Roger Hughes proclamation. Commander Reyna. All right, this is going to be a proclamation recognizing September 16 as National Step Family Day. Kristi Borga? Whereas, National Step Family Day is enhanced by our strong commitment to the support the stepfamilies of our nation and their mission to raise their children, create strong family structures to support the individual members of the family, and instill in them a sense of responsibility to all extended family members. And whereas, approximately half of the Americans are currently involved in some form of stepfamily relationships. And it is the vision of Kristi Borga and the Step Family Foundation that all stepfamilies in the United States be accepted, supported, and successful. And whereas, California has been blessed by thousands upon thousands of loving stepparents and stepchildren who are daily reminders of the joy, trials, and triumphs of the stepfamily experience and of the boundless love contained in the bond between all types of parents and children. And whereas, National Step Family Day is a day to celebrate the many invaluable contributions stepfamilies have made to enriching the lives and life experience of the children and parents of America, and to strengthen the fabric of American families and the society. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the City of Los Banos do here proclaim September 16, 2022 as the National Step Family Day and recognize the stepfamilies of America for being a valuable part of today's society through love and guidance for our nation's children. It is witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Los Banos the 21st day of September, 2022. All right, and we got certificate of recognition. Joshua? Josiah? Maderosin. Okay. Certificate of recognition presented to Josiah? Maderosin. Police Officer, Los Banos Police Department. In recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the City of Los Banos and for being named Employee of the Month for August 2022. And I appreciate your job well done. All right, our finance department? Ms. King? Kim? It's going to be a well-deserved certificate of recognition presented to the finance department staff of City of Los Banos. In recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the City of Los Banos and for receiving for the eighth consecutive year the Government Finance Officers Association's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Fiscal Year 2020-2021. Excellent job.
Thank you.
Would you like to say?
So this is a pretty involved process. The checklist is about 50 pages long. And it's reviewed by officers outside of the state, so there's no bias. And if you have any, I guess what they call criteria outside of what they mark, you don't get this. It's a very difficult award to get. And the fact that this finance staff has gotten it eight years in a row is quite amazing. The criteria is changing for next year, so that's going to be a challenge to make sure that we get nine years in a row. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Very well deserved. Ms. King? Ms. King, you guys come back, let me get a picture. All right, do we have anybody here for Dutch Brothers? This is a certificate of recognition presented to Dutch Brothers of Los Banos. In appreciation in appreciation of the support it has shown to the youth of the Los Banos by participating in a fundraiser day where a portion of all sales was donated for the youth recreation sports program in the City of Los Banos. We appreciate that. Thank you. All right, we now go move on to the next item. Item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. Jurisdiction of the city council includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chambers information table. At this time, I would like to invite the public to come forward and speak and remind everyone else in the chambers to silence their phones.
Okay, I live in the mobile home park that we've been having trouble. We've addressed you guys a bunch of times about the homeless, what they're doing to us. And we have been ignored by you guys, which you pledge allegiance to the flag and it says justice for all. We're not getting justice. What we're getting is you guys ignoring us. And we need something to be done with those people. The other day, they had a fire going so strong, so big, so smoky, because they burn wood. They don't burn charcoal. I wound up in the hospital for three hours in the emergency room because I couldn't breathe. The smoke was getting into our homes. We were obeying the law, they weren't, but nothing was done. So I, because of what I went through that day, I wrote a poem for you guys. And it might not sit very well with you, but this is what I feel, what we feel, we need to be heard. And the name of it is Nazi Rain. I live in a small town that feels as if though it is under Nazi rain. If you live here to see it, it is very plain. The city only cares what you feel if you have money. To you, this may sound funny, but to us who live here, it is very atrocious. We honestly feel that soon the homeless against us will turn ferocious. We live in a mobile home park that is being held captive by fear, by the city refusing to move the homeless from our side. When someone who is disabled dies due to stress, maybe they will be reactive. I was going to offer each one of you a poem so that you can frame it, put it in your office, and look at it every time you guys think of things that are going on and to know how low this city council has gone. I hope you guys really listen with the open heart, the way the pastor said, not just sitting there trying to look gorgeous or whatever. You guys need to listen and know that we are going through hell out there. But you guys aren't listening to us. We've told you about them stealing, about going into the homes, about finding used condoms hanging on the fences, about syringes, used syringes, about them burning wood. They burned an RV. Nobody has done anything. I don't think they even get tickets. If I put a fire by my house with wood, the police would go out there so fast, I'd have a ticket, my head would be spinning. But these people can do everything they want, and nothing is being done. We pay our taxes. We need somebody to listen to us, and please help us. We've begged you, we've talked to you. I don't know what else we have to do so that we can get something done.
Well, my name is Johnny Martinez, Martinez Trucking here in Los Banos. I was here a couple of months ago about the police department, how my mom was sick and she had put a restraining order just to stay away, it wasn't violent. And how my dad called the police department and asked them for permission for me to pick up, because I was moving to Fresno, and how they said it was okay. And we're on a recorded line. How I called to confirm it and they said it was okay for me to go over there. And soon as I got there, they said for me to call. And they said I was violated. And they came and arrested me in front of my father, you know, my elderly father. And since I came, I expressed my feelings the last time, all the police departments been treating us. They gave us a letter. We've been, our shop has been there for over 50 years, and we're about to sell it pretty soon. But I have a motorhome there. And I've been, I go there and I stay at my parents'. But I go there and I stay there at the shop once in a while at night. And I've been driving truck up and on. I had just had a knee surgery. But just recently, we got a letter from a code enforcement that we had to clean up the shop, we had to move the motorhome. And my dad came, he was really upset about the fact that he had gotten a stetzer. Because we never been bothered. He goes, this is a retaliation because you went over to the city meeting the other day. That's all it is. He says, I've never been bothered for years here. We've been here for over 50 years. There was nothing, no apartments, no nothing there. We've never been bothered here. Since that day, that same day he got the letter, my dad was in the hospital in an ambulance. Every time I go somewhere in my vehicle and officer sees me, they make a U-turn, they follow me. And they're just, why don't they just leave us alone? You know, I've been here for 59 years. My parents have been here forever, you know. Why are they bothering us now? You know, they always find a way to bother us, you know. My dad says, that's all it is. Since you went to that meeting, now they're retaliating against us. You know, and you know, I go there because they broke into our shop. They cut the fence in five different places. I called the other day, they caught somebody next door in your building, their building there. The cops came and they found some kids. And I called the owner that early morning, I think it was about 3:00 something in the morning. They caught like two kids over there, three kids. And they just told them to leave. And they never get, so the owners were upset, you know. They didn't put them in jail or do anything to them. They cut my fence, they found the bolt cutters and everything. And I says, I don't know. He says, you have to take that up with the police department. But the police, the police have been bothering us. The one minute to another minute, they're following me down the road. They make U-turns obvious, they make U-turns right behind me, and they're following me. And they're finding a way to give me a ticket. And ever since that day, my dad's blood pressure's been up since the day he got the letter for him to clean up and move everything out of there. My brother's called from Granite Bay to see what he can do and make arrangements to get in a permit. And the lady over at code enforcement, she won't return the calls. You know, he's called several times, like the last three weeks, and we haven't heard from them. Like they don't want to deal with us. We want to work with the city in every way that we can. But from left and right, they bother, they find a way to get back at us. Retaliation is what it is. Please leave us alone, you know, let us live our life. My parents have been there for over 50 years. We're selling the shop soon. So my dad's been there for 67 years. And now my dad is, you know, he's been sick because of this letter, you know. He says, I've never been bothered here for over 50 years that we had the shop here. You know, we've sold firewood here in Los Banos for years. Been trucking company, been paying our paying our taxes, we've been, I'm moving to Fresno into one of my homes. On Tuesday, I'll be gone. I'm taking the motorhome, we're cleaning the shop, we had somebody come in and help us. My dad can't, he's, he's ill, he can't work, and I had a total knee replacement, so we do need more time from code enforcement to let us clean up, you know, not to be honest and to be so strict. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council people, member of the public law enforcement. My name is Rabbi Amnon Shor. I immigrated from Israel 42 years ago. Out of that, 36 years in the valley, mainly in Fresno. I was a businessman, a farmer, and I've been a rabbi for about 30 years now. I am running for state senate seat. District 14, which Los Bannos is part of the district, it's a large district, close to a million people, three big counties. And you're asking, Rabbi, you seems like a happy person, which I am, married for almost 42 years, have three children, seven grandchildren that are scattered, so we have to travel a lot. You say, why are you running? Being 69 years old, most people my age, you know, retire, get a new set of golf, golf clubs, and go and have fun and spend the time with the grandchildren. What I'm seeing, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen here, the past few years, it's not America and the valley that I came for. I remember as a child, reading about California, a dreamland, all the westerns. When I met my wife, she said, oh, I'm from a small town in central California, Fresno. I said, well, I heard about Fresno, I know exactly where it is. I read William Saroyan, The Human Comedy. She thought, wow, what a Rhodes Scholar I met. But anyway, I came here, I chose this place, and what I see is everything going to pot. The Democrats, and I don't know where you are politically, and it's not about this side or this side, it's about our lives. Farmers are running out of water, and I believe it is intentional. I actually studied farming in Israel, so I know all about it. I bought a farm here. I had to sell it because there's no water. A lot of dry land on the west side, and it's not the farmers' problem. They don't take the water and sell it. They sow, sow and, and, and raise crops for everybody, for most of the nations and probably half of the world. Why are they being punished? I know the leading party, they're in control, they come and give some money to different communities, but this is the money they already took from the community, and they give part of it back. My understanding that my opponent never showed up here, never gave you a penny, but I know she gave to other communities. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not going to keep you long. I'm a man of integrity. I'm a man of his word. I was raised by my parents. My grandfather was a rabbi, my father was a diamond dealer, which I started. Was that?
One minute.
He said, son, your word is your bond. You shook somebody's hand, somebody's hand, and you gave him your word, you keep it. I want to say, I know I heard a blessing from the pastor, but I want to say something from our perspective, if I may. May I say a blessing for you guys? May the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. May the Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace. May the Lord continue to bless this community. I have driven through this place many, many times, and I love it. May I sign, sound, it's a very special instrument called shofar, the ram's horn. Anybody heard that? Have you? You'll hear it again now. God bless you. Thank you so much. I'll be there and I'll help you, I promise.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council members. I'm Anna McCauley, a 25-year resident in Los Panos. Tonight, I'm going to speak briefly on three topics. The first is regarding the Peninsula Clean Energy. Any residents listening to this council meeting need to know this company and, and where they invest. They invest in Wacko Environmental Groups. I was shocked. I've talked to several people, I never got online to look at much of it. I was incensed by only getting a buck or two, which hasn't happened yet because we don't have our true up. But while we get a couple of dollars off on electrical generation, nothing on delivery or maintenance of these lines, this is peanuts, and eventually it's gonna probably amount to about 25 cents, not two bucks. Furthermore, every one of us should be aware how this company invests their funds. We should all be outraged that they cater to groups you wouldn't want, unless you're a diehard environmentalist that only sees trees for hugging. Everyone was opting in, no choice, but I highly stressed you to opt out. When you look at their website to understand what these people are all about, it's pretty darn eye awakening, eye opening. Interesting that the city of Merced wanted nothing to do with PCE, if I have it right. As council members, where were you? I know Councilmember Lewis sounded this concern several years ago. I'm shocked when, as I read this stuff, that we actually have these people in our town. But you opt out, and let's see where they go. After all, they are a Bay Area company, so that should say a lot. Second, years ago, developers had only to set aside raw land for the, in the development, where they were, for the city to establish and pay for a park, daycare center, or whatever at the city's expense. That was changed to the developer needing to build out the park within the development. Now we have too many parks. Think about the water and the maintenance. Do we have the funds to keep doing this for every development that comes up? Developments are not as large as they once were, unless you consider that the lots are a lot smaller and they're closer together. But anyway, this is too much money for so many parks to be maintained. This needs to change. Council members, I recommend you come up with other things the developer needs to do rather than building more parks. There's dilapidated areas around town. Maybe we should have a developer pick one of these dilapidated areas, if you were to pick that as one of the options, and to have them rehabilitate it, state what needs to be done. They can be in other areas of town, not within their area of new homes, because we know there's no dilapidation there. I'm sure if you discuss this, you'll have many suggestions where the developers in town need to have skin in doing business here, not just building homes, but improving all of Los Panos. Third item, this is nothing personal to the individual I'm going to mention, but I was stunned to read that Director Stacy Elm said that Rail Trail Project, the council approved a few years ago, was too grandiose, and we need to change it. I was on the planning commission at that time. We had community involvement, we had architects, we had a whole slew of involvement to determine what kinds of architecture we wanted in different places from Second Street over to Mercy Springs. It was beautiful, and it was our serious intent to make this a real focal point in Los Panos. After all, it's all about trying to put, make a stamp for our town when we live here or do we encourage people to come here, or even to visit. It was mixed use, lots, et cetera. Anyway, it was gonna be beautiful when it was all built out. What's going on here? Yes, the economy turned down in 2008 or '09, or we would have already had this, but why are we wanting to change what we worked so hard to build? And just to go for a bunch of cheap, sorry-looking architecture because we can't afford it now, we can't afford to look ahead as what we wish we had? Builders will come, they need to follow the designs, keep that in place. Stick with what we decided upon, or we'll always be redoing, repaying, or coming up with less than we deserve. Are we to become somebody's cheap date after all? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley. Do I have anyone else in the public? We'll turn over to Ms. Maloney and see if there's anyone that emailed.
Yes, I have some comments. Ms. Maloney, please can you read this at the council meeting tomorrow evening, September 21st, 2022? Good evening, Mayor Protam and City Council of Los Bannos. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend the city council meeting this evening. I want to address the homeless issue again behind Rancho, Los Bannos Mobile Home Park. Once again, our fence was destroyed by a homeless man in a RV who parked on top of the embankment next to our fence. I noticed him around 6:00 PM the day before the fire. This RV had been in the homeless camp a few days prior, as the man was standing with the passenger side door open, drinking a drink and waving to someone in the homeless camp. Later that night, or actually the next morning, the RV caught fire, burned our fence substantially, caused a tenant to seek medical treatment at the ER. Councilman Jones, what is your solution for our safety? Councilman Jones, how do you plan on keeping the fires from erupting and frightening our tenants? Councilman Jones, what is your solution to our plight, our safety, and our wellness? We, as tenants of Rancho, Los Bannos Mobile Home Park, would not care if they lived there, if they respected us and the law. This encampment is lawless, and they do not respect themselves, their peers, or us. You have homed a lawless community that you have no control over, yet you want to turn a blind eye to receive grants for the city to help them, but this encampment has been here since 2020. When will they be homed? How long do we have to wait? How many grants have to come through for them to be homed? If they have refused help, how long do we have to endure? How long do we have to put up with illegal fires, explosions, trespassing, theft, dirty hypodermic needles, loud music, foul language, damaging our fence and defacing our property? How long? How long? Councilman Jones, I would like an answer from you, please call me and explain. Thank you to the council persons who have listened to us. We appreciate all that you are trying to do. Thank you, Los Bannos Police Department, for the extra volunteer patrol. We are desperately seeking help from the city, please help us. Thank you, Chandra Lewis, Assistant Manager, Rancho, Los Bannos Mobile Home Park. Hello, City Council. I'm writing tonight because I'm unable to make it to City Hall. Again, I'm bringing a few things to your attention and hopefully to the citizens of Los Bannos. The rumor mill is going again, and for such a transparent city, yeah, right, it's amazing that mill is even needed. Number one, you want Paul to be in the mayor's seat prior to an election. I guess us voters are not needed. Number two, you plan on immediately rehiring Josh, who you've given credit for numerous things that he just happened to be employed at the time of conclusion. I'm surprised you didn't give him credit for Training Tower and Police Station, although he did want to take credit for himself. Basketball courts, flags, Pacheco Park, all acknowledged and working on by the Home Depot, flags are not meant to be used for long periods of time outdoors. Needless to say, they had to be removed. The only thing that city money has not flagged for was pickleball courts, and we all know who we were impressing with that. Now these rumors are out there because someone or three have a personal agenda that the entire community doesn't agree with. One wants to smear the next to his name, remove because, because he convinced the council to hire Josh and has worked on it for a long time prior to it. One is new and one does whatever is asked of him. A new set of the Three Amigos with an agenda that might only cover certain districts and not good for the whole, geez. I can't go out and inflame everyone to come and talk because that's wrong. It's only voicing one person's opinion. I can only voice my opinion with the hope that we survive the next two to three years, and our community won't say, OMG, what did we do? Or how much do we have in reserve now? And what do you mean Measure H is going to new sidewalks downtown and not to the police and fire departments? Thanks for listening, and thank you, Lucy, for reading this since it's my words. Kathy Ballard. And those are the only comments I received.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. I will close the public forum, and we'll move to the next item, item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. And I will now ask the city clerk to read the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. The items on the consent agenda are as follows. Check warrant numbers 234510 through 235084 in the amount of $2,616,647.18. Minutes for the August 17th, 2022 special city council meeting. Minutes for the August 17th, 2002 city council meeting. Minutes for the August 25th, 2022 special city council meeting. Fourth quarter investment report for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. City Council Resolution Number 6543, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the City of Los Bannos pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Number 6544, amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget by increasing appropriations in the Lighting and Landscape District Number 19 Fund and the line item 289458200213 for expenditures in the amount of $27,000 for water usage. City Council Resolution Number 6545, amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget by increasing appropriations in the Community Center Fee Fund 2444101753 for expenditures in the amount of $11,000 for the purchase of a compressor for the Grand Room Air Conditioning Unit in the Community Center. City Council Resolution Number 6546, authorizing the award of, of the construction contract to McGoldini, Inc. in the amount of $585,731.27 with a 10% contingency in the amount of $58,573 for the construction of the Community Center Parking Lot Improvements Project. City Council Resolution Number 6547, amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget as it pertains to expenditures in the Park Maintenance Technical Services account in the amount of $8,950. City Council Resolution Number 6548, amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget by increasing appropriations in the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund 20641010753 for expenditures in the amount of $19,000 for the purchase of school boards at Colorado Ballpark. City Council Resolution Number 6549, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a contract with Adart, Inc. for the construction and installation of a new digital welcome sign and associated infrastructure and budget amendment in the digital welcome sign and associated infrastructure and budget amendment in the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars and ninety-seven, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. City Council Resolution Number six, five, five, zero, authorizing a word of construction contract to MidCal Pipeline and Utilities, Inc., in the amount of one million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and five dollars, with a ten per ten, ten percent contingency in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars for the fairgrounds area water line. City Council Resolution Number six, five, five, one, accepting the grant easement and agreement from O'Reilly Auto Enterprises LLC for the placement of a gate wine sign to the downtown of the City of Los Banas along Sixth Street, APN zero, two, six, zero, four, four, zero, five, two. City Council Resolution Number six, five, five, two, authorizing the interim city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Merced County Sheriff's Department for Inmate Transportation Services. City Council Resolution Number six, five, five, three, approving the acceptance of a forty-three thousand, six hundred dollar grant, TR two, three, zero, one, zero, form the California Office of Traffic Safety and amending the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year budget by increasing the appropriation amount of the state grant fund account for expenditures in the amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. City Council Resolution Number six, five, five, four, authorizing the interim city manager to enter into the Tenth Amendment to Landscape Maintenance Contract between the City of Los Banas and Ronnie's, Inc., and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. I will now turn to the council, see if there's any items to be moved for discussion or separate vote. Mr. Jones?
No items.
Mr. Lomas?
No items, thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I do have several items I'd like to pull for discussion and vote. Uh, it would be item number G, K, L, M, and Q.
Okay, so we'll start with item G. And we'll ask Director, or, or Engineer, Mr. Tan.
Good evening, Councilmember Lewis. Do you have specific questions for this particular item?
Yes, I'll, I'll give you the specific questions. Um, is my microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, in reviewing, um, this particular item on the agenda, it looks like we have a shortfall of roughly around twenty-seven thousand dollars for water usage, uh, particularly around, uh, the Talbot Park in, um, our city. Um, in the report, it says that it was discovered in August of two thousand twenty-two, but the report also indicates that, um, the time period of concern was from September, two thousand twenty, and as I see the report, um, it looks like February, two thousand twenty-two, where there was no, um, reading or water consumption that was counted for that period. Um, and also, uh, from the months of May, two thousand twenty-one through roughly about September of twenty-one, those are generally our hot months here in Los Banas. So, um, I, I guess I'd like to know what happened and why there was no reported water consumption during that time.
That's a great question, Councilmember. It's actually that the water consumption, so we actually consuming water, but the meter was actually stuck, so it's actually the number was not, uh, generating, so the waters, the irrigation is still working, uh, normally, but somehow the meters, um, and the, um, inner mechanicals of it was not registering the units. So our staff had to go in and actually do an audit of all of those consumption, and it determined that this was the, the shortfall that was not billed for, for all those waters that was consumed during those period of time.
Okay, so I, I know you weren't here for most of that time, but from September of two thousand twenty to February, two thousand twenty-two, it's roughly about a year and a half. Is there, does our staff now have a scheduled time to go out and check those meters? Because obviously, for a year and a half, nobody checked anything, and water was being used, and now we have to, you know, allocate money out of the budget to take care of the shortfall.
Right. Yeah, and we have, um, essentially about twelve thousands connections or so, mo, all of those connections to be, um, read automatically through radio frequencies. So our staff were trying to look at all of the irregularity, uh, on a regular basis, but we don't have currently the, the, the amounts or capacity to be checking every single one of those on a regular basis, so we are doing spot checks for a lot of those. Um, we have about a staff of three or so's in our, our water, uh, quality control units that are doing those reading. Um, so a lot of time, you know, a lot of our energy has been going into making sure that, you know, all the services are continuing to functions. We are doing some audits, especially on a special account, that we've seen the patterns of, you know, no payments or, or misreading or errors, so those ones, we have it in, in, in our work plan to check on a regular basis, that is, on a, um, on a, a monthly, uh, bill, billing periods.
So whether it's manually checked or whether it's by radio frequency, and I'm assuming this was the case, the latter.
Mm-hmm.
No one checked the radio frequency for a year and a half?
They, they have checked, but unfortunately, there are some that, that might have got missed. Um, a lot of them, they actually take a look at irregularities. Um, so, you know, and again, you know, we have about twelve thousands, a unit or so that we checks. Um, most of them, we try to check it on a billing cycle, but there are some's that, that, uh, get missed, uh, from time to time.
Okay, so I, I assume this, you know, Talbot Park being probably our biggest park in the city, that this problem has been rectified?
It has, so the meter has been replaced. Um, and one thing to note, too, is that we also have scenes and increase, you know, as we continue to build, you know, we, new meters are required. Um, as you're aware, with the supply chains, we are a little bit behind on getting new meters. Um, and most, a couple of cities within our areas are seeing that same issue, so we've been placing order for new meter, but some of them's are actually coming a little behind. So where our, kind of, a lot of that, some of that effort has been delayed, but we are working to, to rectify that.
Okay, thank you for, for the, the answer. Okay, um...
Next, next item, Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, we'll just take each item and then...
Okay.
Do the role afterwards, okay.
Uh, so we're going to item K. Again, we'll turn to, uh, Engineer Tan.
Yeah, Councilmember, do you have any specific questions for this item?
Yes, yes, I'll, I'll give you my questions. Okay, so, um, from what I read in the report, there were funds that were allocated in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two for scoreboards. And I recall the previous, um, city manager had, uh, asked me to go out to that park and look at the scoreboards because it, it is in my district, and that was in the early part of two thousand twenty-two. Um, in May of this year, the council approved, uh, the purchase of three scorebo, boards. Um, and, and as I understand, there was already money in the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget, but with the approval in May, we still had about a month and a half to get those boards purchased. So what happened? What, I mean, with the money that was there, why didn't we purchase it before the end of the fiscal year?
So we did, uh, reach out, uh, we actually signed the, uh, contract during fiscal year twenty-two, but unfortunately, usually, we don't actually pay for those equipment until they actually arrive on site, and there was a shipping delay, so by the time it's arrived, it's already in July of two thousand twenty-two, so that would be in fiscal year twenty-three, so that's why we're asked to essentially move that funding from, uh, fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three, just because of shipping delay.
So the, it, it was the same funding that was moved forward from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three? We didn't have to allocate additional funds?
That's correct, yeah. It was not spent in twenty-twenty-two, so now we're asking to be spending that on twenty-twenty-three.
And that money was coming out of the ARPA fund in two thousand twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two fiscal year?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's part of the, part of the restriction relating to this is, is the practices of, of, of our auditors, and, and usually, we would accrue that back and match up that with the budget. We weren't able to do that for, for that period, and thus, it carried into this next fiscal year. So it's...
I, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't losing any money out of the budget that we didn't expend in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year and then have to reallocate new monies.
No.
Okay.
And, and with it being the ARPA fund related, it, it's, it's identified, uh, through, through the, the whole plan that we're putting together to spend these funds, and, and that was identified. It just, it was just more of a timing issue in terms of how we would normally accrue that back or recognize that back in the previous fiscal year, and it, that just wasn't, we weren't able to do that.
Okay. And, and I just wanted to say, I do appreciate, uh, you putting in the, the contracts so that council can see exactly what the bid was and, and the items that, um, we're going to be paying for in this project. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis, before we move to the next item, uh, if everybody would oblige, just, just in a, a short five-minute break, one of our council members just needs to step Thank you, everyone. And we will now resume, and we'll go back to Councilmember, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Um, this is item, uh, seven, L, um, with Mrs. Elms, our Community Economic Development Director. And the questions that I have on this is that in June of two thousand twenty-two, this year, for the fiscal year budget twenty-two, twenty-three, the council approved fifty-five thousand dollars for a digital entrance sign at the east end of Pacheco Boulevard. Um, and according to the report that we received, uh, in our agenda, uh, there was only, uh, I guess, one bid, there were two bids, but only information was given on one bid. Uh, and that bid came in at a hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars, which is a shortfall, a shortfall of sixty-four thousand, uh, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars over and above what we approved, which is a little bit more than a hundred percent. Um, so my question is, um, when did the RFP go out? I, I understand we received it sometime in, um, July, and, um, in that proposal, it looks like it's, um, one of the costs, which is the second highest cost, is for the company to remove the old green sign that we have out on the east end of town, um, at a cost of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. I think that sign is made of wood. I'm not sure how it's put in the ground, probably held by cement, and I'm, I'm just kind of wondering why our own public work staff can't take that out and save that seventeen, almost eighteen thousand dollars that it would cost us to have the company removed. Um, you know, we're, we're, uh, in our consent agenda tonight, we're, um, asking for an easement for the, uh, signage that's going to be put on, uh, the, the overhead signage, I can't recall the name of it, on Pacheco Boulevard and, uh, Sixth Street, which is Main Street, for the entrance into our downtown area. And I know that's going to cost quite a bit of money to do that. Um, I, I'm really concerned, you know, that we authorized fifty-five thousand, and now we're paying more than double the amount for this sign, and we're going to be asking for money to pay for the, the signage, uh, entrance into downtown, uh, Los Banas as a welcoming, the archway. So, um, first, I'd like, uh, to have those questions answered about the doubling of the price, and, you know, was, was that a surprise to staff as well?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so let, let, let's, uh, let's get those questions answered.
Okay. Councilmember Lewis, so on, um, the increase in price, so when, when staff puts together the budget and the capital improvement projects, we do get an estimate, and we generally, we generally, um, seek out, um, just without giving too much of specifics on a scope of a project, uh, generally what costs would be to get a rough idea so that we can build the budget, but those are just estimates. So, um, those were estimates that we had received, um, but based on the scope of work, the cost of construction, that was the lowest bid. So at, um, the proposal that's before you tonight, that is the lowest proposal that we received. Um, the second proposal that we received had two costs included with it, and it was an additional twenty thousand and thirty thousand dollars. Um, and then to, and that's equated to the permits that also need to be included, the electricity, the internet that needs to go out there, now the increased cost of construction and the increased cost in electronics. That LED board is all electronic, it gets made overseas and shipped, um, to the United States, that's how the other LED board was made. Um, and we were fortunate to get a really good price on, um, the replacement of West Eye and Pacheco, um, that particular board. So, um, to answer that question, staff has an estimate that we build the budget, but it is just that, an estimate. It does require us to go out to RFP to get solid proposals, um, based on the scope of work. And then, um, on the second question about, um, when the RFP went out, it did go out on July first, um, and it was out for about three or four weeks. Um, I apologize that I don't have the date of, um, when the proposal, um, went out and when it was due back, but it was out for about three or four weeks, and, um, it went out to, um, sign companies, construction companies, um, and those in that industry specifically, and then, uh, within that industry, there's bidder lists so that we could get a broad range of proposals. Um, and then... And then on the third question, why the removal wouldn't be through the Public Works Department? So on that item, it is not just the removal of the existing sign, but it's also installation of the new display. So the installation of the new display is actually where the bulk of the cost is, but because the mobilization is already there, that sign company has the equipment, has the mobilization to remove the existing sign, our Public Works Department does not have that equipment. It would require a crane in which this construction company, this sign company, has the equipment to remove this in probably a matter of hours. Our Public Works Department doesn't have the capacity or the equipment. This would probably take us to rent equipment and would far exceed that cost there. So it was much more efficient to go through this process, although that was not within the scope of work, but this company provided it. And as they were the lower bid, it was a much more efficient route to go. So that's why staff decided to go that route. And I think I answered all the questions, but if I missed one, I apologize.
Okay. So thank you for the answers. And, you know, albeit that the other bid may have come in at a higher cost, I guess I'm struggling with the fact that this sign is not that big. I mean, it's not like a three-story sign that we have down at, like at the old, old shopping center. That's a big sign. I can understand us not being able to take that down, but this is not that big. And they've built in the cost to remove that sign. I don't even know what that separate cost is for them doing that particular portion. And then for, to install the new, the new display, that is understandable. But, you know, we just approved this in, what, was it May, June? And I'm struggling with how expensive this whole process is based on what the council approved. I would have hoped that staff had done some research to see what all the new costs were out there, not anything indefinite or specific, but a more generalized cost of this, knowing that the cost of everything is more expensive in our world today. But this is a big overrun and I just, you know, I don't think this sign is something that our staff could not accomplish in taking down. And, you know, I would like to know how they built that cost in rather than lumping the two together. And probably because, you know, that was a convenience to help our staff out by not removing it. This is a pretty expensive project considering all things and that we have to look at spending money for as a council up here. So I'm really struggling with this particular project that we should move forward at this time. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it at some point, you know, here in our city, because certainly I'm one that loves beautification and enhancement, but I also have to look at how much things are costing us based on unfunded projects that we have facing us right now in the city. So I can't support this one. And I can't speak for the rest of the council, but that's my position because I think it's just too expensive based on other projects that we have coming before us in the future and what we have to pay out now.
The City Manager wants to jump in for a second.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Protem. Members of the council, to take you back a little bit, you released a bid, and I think that was shortly before I got here. But you have in your standard language that you can accept or reject all bids at any time for any reason. So, you know, what we're, our job really is to, on this and other items, is to provide the city council with accurate and timely information to allow you to make decisions. It's A-OK if you decide not to do this project, but I guess I'm concerned with the fact that the impression that I hear is that our Public Works Department had the staffing to get in there and do this stuff. That's not true. It is not true. I'd like to hear from our Public Works Director what you think it may have cost. Let's just say we do the demolition, the removal, and the installation. What is, what is it going to cost? It's not free.
So, thank you, Tintrom City Manager, Willman. So we did get a chance to take a look at that a little bit. Stacy and I did get a chance to review.
May I ask you to speak a little louder?
Yeah. So there's two, there's two ways to remove the sign. One is to, of course, the most economic way is to use a crane, which is the easiest, you know, you park it on the contran right away with contran encroaching permit, lift the entire sign as a whole, put it in the back of a truck and haul off. That is the shortest and least amount of man hour that we can do, but unfortunately, none of our public work staff even have the classification to actually operate a crane. Typically, what I've seen is, so we install a very similar sign with about the same size in the city of Gilroy, about 50 of them. They have a crane-mounted trucks that actually do all these operations. One of the companies, usually the signs company, they're very specialized in this, so they can do this in a matter of about two hours or so. Public work would have take probably about more like four to six hours if we can even get the equipments and have the, the equipment have to come with an operator. The second way to do that would be as to actually go up on a ladder trucks and actually cut it off piece by piece. That actually will take a lot longer, unfortunately, just because we have to piecemeal those pieces.
Neuron, excuse me, can you give us a number as to what you think it may have cost using your internal staff to get this done? And I know I'm putting you on a spot, but it's the same spot that you've been on for a lot of these projects.
Yeah. Typically, it would be a four-man crews with two equipment, two pieces of equipment or so, plus also the haul-out trucks. So we'll probably estimate somewhere, just for the removal alone, would be somewhere between $3,000 to $4,000. And that's not including the staff times to do the permitting because we are working differently from the contractors, so each one of us would have to get a separate contran encroaching permit, which in itself would be three to four week process.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Protem, I had gotten a couple of calls on this particular issue, and so there was some concern that the extrapolation from the actual physical paper of the bid, folks wanted to see the original bid. So I hope that each one of you, I'm looking for Lucy, did those get distributed?
They were emailed to the council.
Okay. So you got those electronically that allowed you to see the physical bid that was submitted by the companies involved. And I think that's about all we can do. You know, I'm neutral. If you want to pass this thing, that's fine. If you don't, that's fine, too, but you need to understand the process. We're very regimented. We don't play games. We get the thing out on the street. We receive them back. We preserve your right through your very able city attorney to accept or reject all bids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. And thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Willman. And in the process, you know, of our staff report, some of this information was missing. So it's our to make a determination based on what's in the staff report. So this is a time for me for clarification. And again, I'll say that I cannot speak for any other council member, only for myself. I cannot support this project tonight because, number one, it has doubled in price, and number two, we have other things looming that we need to take care of. I think this is something that we can look forward to, to the future. And I'm hoping that this sign will also be an advertisement as the one that we have on Eye and Pacheco coming into the town for events that may happen. But right now, I think it's just an expense that, for me, I can't justify. So that's my take on that. And thank you, Mrs. Elms and Neuron, for your input tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Do you have a question, Mr. Lomas? Got a comment from Mr. Lomas.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. I share the councilwoman's concern about costs and the extraordinary jump in the proposal here, but I would ask there to be consideration for the inflation, the cost of labor, cost of fuel, and I believe that these costs will only continue to grow up. We have a, possibly an economic downturn, which is going to further exacerbate our ability to, or reduce our purchasing power. So if not now, when? And later on down the line, it's just going to be more expensive. So again, just a consideration. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. Do you want to move to the next item, Ms. Lewis?
Thank you.
Hold on. Mayor Protem, last question.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you. My question is for staff. With this added cost, what do you think the payoff is for this sign? Is it, in your opinion, is it worth it to have? I know we lease out some advertising space on it. Do you see a long-term return on it to where it would make up these additional costs over time?
Over time, it would be paid off. It would be a long period of time. I think I estimated, based on the new cost, about 10 years, which that is generally, that is generally the lifespan. We get about 10 to 15 years, and hopefully with this newer technology, we would get maybe, you know, 12 to 15 years out of this new sign. But generally, they do last about 10 years, so it should pay for itself by the time we're ready to get a new sign.
So worst-case scenario, it's a wash. It's budget neutral.
It should be.
Okay. Thank you.
And that, I do want to clarify, that's based on, very conservative, that's based on the revenue that we get from our existing sign. We would hope that this newer sign with new technology would attract more advertising and more opportunity for the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. I have a question, and this is for our Public Works or probably more for our Park and Recreation The charges that we have, that we have for the community to rent space on a board, whether it's the one on Eye Street or the one at the community center, are those reevaluated on an annual basis for cost of living raises? And when was the last time we had a raise on our fees?
So that would be actually me. My department facilitates the lease space on the digital sign. The community center, they don't rent out space unless it's for an event that's associated with the rental of the community center. The West Eye Street and Pacheco sign, specifically, the policy is for economic development. It's $119.52. That is a part of our user fee schedule, and it's evaluated with the user fee schedule. So we just adopted that user fee schedule 2018? 2019? Around there. And we do evaluate. So with the new evaluation of the user fee schedule, it will be evaluated. And what's evaluated is what it costs the city to operate. Staff time to put a slide up is a part of that. Electricity bills and the DSL line. So all of that is factored into that user fee.
So that was anywhere from three to four years ago. How often does an evaluation come up? Do we, are we supposed to do that annually based on the cost of doing business, or do we just do it whenever we think about it?
So usually, there's a considerable amount of work that's gone into that, and it's usually on a five-year basis. Now, with inflation being what it is, it might be something to consider, the council to consider, to direct staff to look at those and maybe start the whole process earlier for looking at these fees. I know there's a few things on the horizon relating to rates and fees and other things like that, so, but it's definitely something if we are asked to do that, we would look at that. But at this point, I think we're three years into a five-year cycle, so I think we will start looking at renewing someone to come in and help with that, probably within the next six to eight months. And then it'll go through the whole process. And it might be something that we look at to get ready for the budget season, so maybe something to present around April is when the budget season starts. But if you would like that done prior to that, that's, again, up to your discretion.
Okay.
One minute. Stacy, could you tell me, how many do we cycle through the day or every minute?
So we only allow 10 advertisements at a time, and the $119.52 is for a 30-day period, so it's a month-long period that that pays for. So the way that the policy is written, we only have 10 slides, and the thought is that through a red light, you'd be able to get through the 10 slides, at least sitting through a red light, and that's why the policy was written that way. Generally, on a fiscal year, it does generate anywhere from $7,000 to maybe $8,500 annually.
Okay. Thank you. Your honor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Protem. I, this Municipal Finance Officers Association Award that you have gotten for eight years in a row is just exceptional. I would say that budgets now, if we look at it, are a year-long process. We talk about fiscal year, July 1 through June 30. What happens usually in January is that the governor releases his budget, and then there are a lot of give and takes with the legislature until May, when what is, what comes out is the May revise. The May revise, in turn, gets a lot of scrutiny and a lot of headbanging until what is supposed to be a budget's adopted on or before July 1. Now, further compounding things is that those of us that are in any way dependent, and a lot of us are, on federal revenues, there is a different fiscal year, as most of us know, that goes October 1 through September 30 at the federal level. So you got to get all this stuff working together. You got to have your legislative people plugged in and representing you. And then the departments come in, and frankly, I like to see five years of history. Typically, there's only three, but I like to see the original amount that was requested the prior year. I like to see the amount that the council approved. I like to see the amount that was actually expended, and then I like to see the amount that's requested for the succeeding year. So you got all that stuff together, but it's not something you can ever rest on. It's a relentless way of looking at things, but if you're going to make a city work and work properly, you've got to be on top of this stuff 24/7, and Brent is probably the best example of that, that I can, that I can show you at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lewis? You want to finish up on that?
Yes. I'm going to wrap that one up. There was one that I didn't mention. It was M, and I just, you know, that one, I just, I did?
You mentioned that.
I did. Okay. Can't remember now. So with that, there were no questions. I just wanted to give staff a good shout out for coming under budget on that, almost $400,000. That was a good thing. So thank you very much on that one. And then my last one is Q. And this is, you know, nothing about the extension. I just want to, you know, reiterate and make sure that we're getting a more detailed contract this time. The ones that we've had in the past and the one that we keep extending year after year really didn't tell the council anything about the detail of how, the details of how the landscaping was to be accomplished. And it was pretty much left to the contractor that we paid. So I'm really hoping that, you know, we're going to lock that down and make sure that, you know, it describes what the actions are for that particular vendor, whoever gets the contract. Irrigation problems, who does the replacement, all of that, so that it's clear to council. And if we have questions or if we get questions from the community, then it's much easier to answer. Another thing I would like to see in it is a chain of reporting. Because I hope whoever gets hired to do this process for us, that they have some sort of supervisor out in the field checking on their staff's work to make sure that it's done according to standard. And perhaps, you know, we have someone that could follow up and make sure that they're doing what they tell us they're doing. So it's like a check-and-balance situation. So that's basically what I wanted to say on that, is that I'm hoping that this contract is going to be really tight and make sure that we have everything locked down as best as possible to make sure that we're getting what we're supposed to get. Trees aren't, you know, bushes aren't growing into trees and things like that. So I just want to make comment on that.
So that's a great segue into that in the future, we're looking to put together a workshop, especially on this, because it impacts not just the city, but individual districts. As you were, that was brought up earlier in regards to the metering and all of that. So the level of services, all of that stuff, the reason why we kind of put a little bit of a pause on the bidding process and the, getting the landscaping contract pushed forward quickly because of the fact that the existing contract was expiring. And the reason why we're asked for this extension is just for that purpose. Because we want to ensure that, one, we get the level of service that the city needs. At the same time, be able to pay for that level of service. And also making sure that the understanding of what is actually the true cost. So those hidden costs in terms of repairs and other things like that, we're going through that entire process. I mean, it's exhaustive process for Public Works and Parks and Rec. So within the, probably within the next month, there's going to, they're going to be on the schedule, some kind of workshop to go through this, because it's a pretty big deal and a fairly major financial impact to the city, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you to our staff for really delving into this to give us a better product than what we've had in the past. And with that, Mr. Mayor Protem?
If I may beg your indulgence, staff is going to get so sick of hearing, I'm sick of hearing me. But here's, this does not include tree trimming, per se? Right. And there's probably a good reason for that, because of the cost involved, the liabilities out there. I remember several decades ago, I was Personnel Director and Risk Manager for another jurisdiction. I've told this story before at staff levels. So we've hashed this out. But you can't, when you're trimming trees, especially the large ones like oaks, you can't, as I would do, you can't just zip them off like that. What happens is that if they are level, the water accumulates. And then the little bugs come in and eat out the center, the cambium layer included, of the tree itself, thus weakening the entire tree. And what happens is what happened to us at Henderson Park, where we had a couple of families underneath a large oak tree. It fell over. And terrible injuries, terrible injuries. So we were paying on that claim for years and years and years. So our people know all this. I believe it. I know. I asked. And the trouble is that if you look at the cost of liability insurance and machinery and gasoline and certainly labor, it's all pointing upward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Lewis, did you want to do a, we're going to do a separate vote for segment L?
Yeah, so we can vote on the consent agenda submitted, but I would like to pull Item K for a separate vote.
Okay, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I will. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted, minus Item K for a separate vote.
Is that L? Yes, K. I think it's L, Ms. Lewis, yeah. L.
Okay, let me see here. L, I'm sorry. You're right. Item L. I have it written here.
We'll make a motion to approve this, the consent agenda, minus L. Do I have a second? I'll second that, Mayor Protem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, consent agenda passes, minus L. And then now we'll go to Item L for a separate vote. Now I'll call for a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. I am not, let's see, I'm not quite sure how to state this. I'm requesting not to approve Resolution Number 6549 as read by title for, of the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? So we do not receive a second motion?
I'm sorry. So if there's not a second on Ms. Lewis's motion, that motion dies. And anyone else, anyone on the council can make another motion that's not identical to hers.
Do I have anyone else to make a motion? Mr. Jones?
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution 6549 as submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lamas? Okay, all in favor? Any noes? Okay, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, my vote is no due to the cost overruns.
Okay, thank you. So I have, we have three ayes with one con, descended, Ms. Lewis. And it passes with me. We'll move on to the next item, Item 8. This is going to be for the public hearing. If you challenge the proposed actions as described herein, court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein are in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. This is going to be for item A, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit number 2022-08 and a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities to allow the use of a Type 47 alcohol license for the on-sale of General Alcohol for Jungle Jims Adventure Lanes located at 923 West Pacheco Boulevard, APN 431-020-002. And we'll turn to Public Works Director Engineer, Mr. Tham.
I'm going to take this one, Mr. Mayor Protem. Although I know Neuron would have my back. So on this particular item, it's a conditional use permit. Just a little bit of background, on August 10, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of conditional use permit number 2022-08 to the Los Banos City Council. The project is located within the San Luis Plaza, and it's zoned highway commercial. It currently operates with a Type 40. So it's currently a family entertainment center. It's a bowling alley. And they currently operate Jungle Jims Adventure Lanes operates with a Type 40 beer-only license. And that originated with Aqua Entertainment Center back in 2016. So Jungle Jims Adventure Lanes began operating in about December 2021 and is requesting with this proposal to intensify their ABC license to a Type 47, which is for the on-sale of general alcohol in conjunction with a bona fide public eating place. These licenses are regulated by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC. And the proposed hours of operation would be seven days a week, from 12:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. And the exciting piece of this proposal is that Jungle Jims Adventure Lanes is expanding their operations to include a sports bar and restaurant, something that our community desires to see as that family entertainment center. So this is the location. It's 923 West Pacheco Boulevard. As I said, this is within the San Luis Plaza Shopping Center. The surrounding uses are commercial. There are various retail uses. There's a supermarket within this use. There's a water store that's adjacent with other retail uses. And Wiener Schnitzel is also located within this particular plaza. It is adjacent to residential uses, but conditions of approval have been incorporated to mitigate any adverse effects to the adjacent residential uses. So according to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, staff has deemed this project to be categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301, in that it is an existing facility and the footprint is not being expanded at this time. A conditional use permit analysis, staff did analyze the general use permit criteria as established within the Los Banos Municipal Code and then the specific criteria for alcohol licenses. And again, the issuing authority is ABC. All of those findings within the municipal code are within the staff report. So if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. Otherwise, I will move on to the next slide, as those are standard findings. The census tract, this project is located within census tract 23.01. There are currently 11 onsite active licenses. That tract runs all the way from the city limits on the west end of town, all the way over to Mercy Springs. And so there are a lot of restaurants within this particular census tract. So there's 11 onsite active licenses. But I do want to note that we would not be adding a license. Instead, we would be replacing the Type 40 with the Type 47. So it would be replacing the Type 40. We wouldn't be adding another license to the census tract. This is the floor plan, which I do apologize, this does not look well on the PowerPoint. But the cameras are highlighted in green. And this floor plan represents the proposed concept of the sports bar and restaurant and how that is incorporated into the bowling alley. So it's tied into that concession stand area. You would come in through the existing lobby, and then there would be connection at the concession stand area into the sports bar and restaurant. This is an exterior picture of the proposed, well, this is the location of Jungle Jims Adventure Lanes and where the proposed sports bar and restaurant would be located within that facility. This is that space that's not being utilized right now, but that's where the sports bar and restaurant would be, which is connected to the bowling alley. So public comment, public hearing notice was published in the West Side Express on Friday, September 9, 2022. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council would consider adopting Resolution Number 6555, finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from CEQA and approving conditional use permit number 2022-08 to allow the on-sale of general alcohol through a Type 47 alcohol license for Jungle Jims Adventure Lanes located at 923 West Pacheco Boulevard. And that concludes my report.
Ms. Elms, could you educate us on the Types 40 and the 47?
Sure. So actually, I'll take a little bit broader lens on that as well. So 40 is for the on-sale of beer only, and beer is all that can be sold. A 41, which is typical, the council sees that in conjunction with restaurants, that's beer and wine. But it has to be in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment. A 47 is general alcohol, so all alcohol spirits can be sold, but it has to be on sale in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment. That means that it has to be consumed on premises, and you can't take that alcohol home essentially.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. I will now open it up, so there's no public.
This is a public hearing, if we can.
So we can open it up to the public hearing? Does anyone, any questions? Received any comments? I'll turn to council, see if they have any questions. Mr. Jones? Mr. Lamas? Ms. Lewis? All right. So we will make a motion on the City Council Resolution Number 6555, finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities and approving conditional use permit 2022-08 to allow for the on-sale of general alcohol under a Type 47 alcohol license at 923 West Pacheco Boulevard, more specifically identified as Assessor Parcel 431-020-002. Can I entertain a motion? Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor Protem. I'd like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6555 as submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lamas?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No noes, the resolution will pass, 6555. We'll move on to the next item, Item 9, consideration of approval of the City Council Resolution Number 6556, rejecting all bids for the construction of the final cover system for the old Los Banos landfill. And now we'll turn to Engineer, Mr. Tham.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So for this item, staff is recommending the rejections of the bid that we have received for the construction of the final cover system for the old landfill projects. So just a little background on the projects. The old landfill in Los Banos is located on the north side of town. The property is abutting the export complex. So it's right adjacent to Del Rio Drive, right off of Highway 165. The current, the landfill is no longer being used, and it consists of two online waste management units that occupy roughly 11 and 1/2 acres of land there. The landfill was used back in 1955 to 1973. It was used as an old burnt dumped, burnt dumped waste unit that is opened only to city waste units. And then from 1973 to 1994, this was no longer being used as a burn dump, but still are being used as an inert waste landfill that used for the city only. So type of debris in that typically includes construction debris, glass and cement. So type of debris in that typically includes construction debris, glass and cement and whatnot as part of the city projects. The depth of the waste ranges anywhere from, you know, one feet to twenty-two feet deep at some locations, and it's spread out throughout the entire site on the north and the east side of the property. Okay? So this pictures show a little bit more of a footprint of kind of where we had determined the waste locations in, in reference to the property line itself. So in two thousand and fourteen, the city council did execute a contract and agreement with a environmental consultant to assist us in determine the limits and as well as a way to mitigate and clean close the landfill itself. After a period of time to review the different alternative, it was determined that it's not feasible to do a clean closure for the landfill. So staff has brought back recommendations to actually do a cover system, which basically is essentially is a, an erosion resistant surface that does not allow water to penetrates and to protect the waste in place. So we have gone to contract with BSK Associates. They started the design process and have to be submitted those design documents to the state water board for approval. In September of two thousand and twenty, the water board did approve our cover systems as submitted. Now with that, on the June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the city council did adopt a budget for fiscal year twenty-three to allow for staff to put this project out for constructions. And on August first, we advertised the project and we advertised for a full month, so the bid was due back in September first. During the bid process, we go through all the proper channels, all the bidder exchange. We've also listed, also invited contractor from various jurisdictions to come in for a pre-bid meeting to encourage the number of bidder. We have three contractors show-ups for the pre-bid meeting, but unfortunately, only one submit a bid for the projects. This bid came in at five-point-eight million dollars, whereas the city engineering estimates and budget was at two-point-three million. So it's essentially two and a half time of what we have budgeted for. Now, per our city, per our municipal code, Section three-sixteens, the city council may reject any bid and all bid presented. And then by the state contracting manual, manual, there is also no basis for protest if the awarding agency decide to reject all bid based on the best interest of the agency. So with that, due to the cost, currently staff is recommending the city council to reject this bid, allow time for staff to go ahead and re-coordinate back with the water board, looking at different alternative and do a value engineering on the project so that way we can look at a much more feasible construction method for this project. So again, that's including our next step. So as soon as we have those alternative determines, we can go ahead and re-advertise the project.
All right. Thank you.
That concludes my presentation.
Any questions in the council? Entertain a motion for Resolution number six-five-five-six. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor Protem. I'd like to adopt City Council Resolution number six-five-five-six as submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lamas?
Yeah, Protem will take a net.
I have a second from Mr. Lamas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All knows, resolution passed. We'll move to the next item, item number ten, review of the city of Los Bannos investment policy. And now we'll turn to Finance Director, Mr. Coon.
So every year, an investment policy should be brought up during the budget process. The last investment policy, I believe, was in two thousand and fifteen, in two thousand and fifteen. It was a very rather rudimentary and basic policy that outlined the government code, but that's about all it did. So up until this point, the city has been very conservative in terms of its investments. And in doing so, we've maxed out some of the areas, investment products that we can use. One is LAF, and the other was we had money in general checking and the FDIC.
Excuse me, would you understand, would, what does LAF stand for?
I'm sorry. So it's the local agency investment fund. It's a statewide fund that's, that has mortgage-backed assets. And basically, it pools all of these municipal governments together in a massive fund and they invest it. And their main usage is for liquidity. So we can, we can take funds out with a phone call in a day, basically. So the yield on that is, is very small because of the fact that the funds are, have to be liquid, right? So I looked at the investment policy and included a more robust language in terms of the requirements of government, per the government code, and came up with this policy that, that still allows for limited credit risk, credit risk being that, that the investments are very secure in, in agencies and other types of, other types of entities that have a credit rating of double-A or higher. I think the only investment product that's triple-A is the US government, and that always teeters on certain things. So what this investment policy will allow us to do is to have some flexibility in terms of laddering some of our investments over a five-year period to maximize potential yield, but still maintaining liquidity and, and a very low credit risk within, within the portfolio. So when I, when I got here, I, we, we had to move some money, because FDIC was actually penalizing us for the amount of money that we haven't had in our checking. And, you know, they insure those things and they're collateralized by a certain thing. So they, so we had to move a considerable amount of money into an investment fund that we already had in existence. We utilize that investment funds for money markets and their agency money markets that are backed by Goldman Sachs, and they have the same liquidity that LAF has. So we're utilizing this as a sweep account. So sweep accounts are usually set up so that you're like a savings account, right? And so any excess cash that's sitting in checking automatically gets swept into these so you can maximize yield and still have liquidity. So in October, I plan on bringing to council the investment strategy, along with the help of, of our investment advisors at Wells Fargo, that shows how we're going to structure the portfolio to, to, in fact, generate close to three million dollar increase at citywide, just in investments and just in interest, and still maintaining the same liquidity, the same high credit, credit, low, I mean, same low credit, same high credit products. And really, what, what this also did is it included investment products that, that aren't, are looked at as, as being socially bad, like oil products, other types of things. So within the government code, it outlines some of those things that, so to be a good steward of the monies and this and that. So the areas, I guess, if there are any questions, but the areas that, that where this changes is, is that our prior investment policy, we actually were in violation of a few, few of these things because of how, how that policy had our, our assets allocated. So in order to comply with that existing policy, we had to move that, that money. Now with this investment policy, one, it all, it, it, it outlines more of the relationship between the city treasurer and the finance department. It, it hadn't done that previously, so really, all of the responsibility of, of that portfolio was with the city treasurer, and now that, that's being highlighted and delegated to the finance director, who really had been doing the majority of, of this investing. And it, it just, it also gives a glossary, so, so it's easier for council to, to look at what's being stated in that, and it explains those products in those terms. And so it, it's, it's a way more robust and transparent investment policy. This is going to be approved now, but then during every budget process, every, every budget year, this will be approved as part of the budget. It should have been in the past and it will going forward. So I, I don't know if I clarified things or made things less clear.
One, Mr. Protem? One quick question. You've made a tremendous leap here and brought us into the twentieth century in terms of financial reporting and the like. You mentioned, though, that the city was in violation or out of compliance. What happened because of that?
Well, so we, the city has been fairly conservative on a budgetary standpoint. So over the, over the economic growth period, the stewardship of, of city funds is quite good, and it increased our cash considerably. So we're in a good position in terms of where we are with, with inflationary pressures and economic downturn. But what that did is, is it created in an environment that, that wasn't maximizing yield or putting those assets to work. It, it was fine, LAF, LAF is a, a product that most cities use, but it kind of ballooned into a situation where, you know, we're still, as of yesterday, right at the max level of LAF, and we still moved a considerable amount of money into the investment account. So after this gets done and, and we go through the, the process of presenting to the council our investment strategy over the next three to five years, you'll see how that yield will create even a better environment in all funds.
Can you give us the amount that you're talking about in the local agency?
There's fifty million, there's fifty million, or is there sixty? There's fifty million that's, that's in LAF.
For the city of Los Bannos?
For the city of Los Bannos, there's, there's thirty million that's sitting still in checking, and there's close to ninety million now in the investment account. So LAF was generating less than, close to three, less than four basis points. The agencies with Goldman Sachs now is close to three percent. So that's quite an increase in interest, and there's still the same liquidity. It's a money market. It can be traded daily. I could call tomorrow and have those funds moved over. We still have a considerable amount of money in checking, but I'm leaving that money in checking until we get this investment and, and the cash flow strategy in place, because we do have a lot of capital projects that are on, 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 on the docket. And we have the police department that's currently burning, you know, a considerable amount of money. So we, we want to ensure that we, we, we have that liquidity. So we're doing that. And within the next month, we'll, we'll highlight and show exactly how, how those, those products will, will benefit the city.
Councilmember Jones, you have a question?
Yes, Brett. Out of those funds, how much is programmed for pensions?
No, this is outside of pensions.
Outside of pensions.
Yeah, well, there's, so this is, this is a topic for another, another day. I mean, I would like to explain what's happening. So right now, on the pension side of things, we have, we have a certain amount of money that, that we've clawed out of the general fund for the purpose of paying down our unfunded liability in PERS. We, we have some, some people coming in first week of October to discuss how to generate more savings to the city on that unfunded liability. So in the near future, you're going to get a presentation in regards to, to how those savings are either going to be through a debt product or the paydown of existing cash. But yeah, there's only about, maybe about two million dollars that's, all of our other is we, we participate in a program called SERPs. That's a trust that's outside of the city's funds, and that has about fourteen million dollars in it. So, but that's for the purpose of, of paying pensions and, and that unfunded liability that, that is, is in the footnotes of, of the financial statements, and, and we can highlight that when we do the workshop for the, for the financial statements to, to go through the whole presentation, that, that will be the perfect time to discuss that.
Do you by chance have a rough estimate on what kind of percentage in growth we're adding to the checking, savings and investment account?
And what, like, just in general?
Yeah, not like what we're receiving, but how much we're really kind of adding it up, like, you know?
Well, there's about a hundred and forty million, and, and we've increased it by about, close to three percent, so.
Three percent a year is what it's kind of growing? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Protem, I, we, we listen to this gentleman closely, and, and we're all going to be budget experts. One of the things that I, I do think you, you hear a lot about, and concern has been expressed, especially in a down market, where we have investments and equities and bonds and those kinds of instruments that lose value in an account. And PERS is no exception to that, the public employee retirement system. When we do a budget, as I mentioned, we, we, unlike the federal government, have to balance our budget, and that has to be done on or before July first. And if the state doesn't get its budget act together by then, we're doing a lot of guesswork. That happens in every, I mean, California has fifty-eight counties and four-hundred-and-seventy-some-odd cities and like seventy-five, eight thousand special districts, so we've, and everything in between. There's this item that Brent referred to. All I remember is OPEB, Other Post-Employee Benefits. And if you're going to evaluate any budget, you need to know what your liabilities are. They, as you've mentioned, it appears as a footnote. It ought not to, in my view. That's, nobody pays attention to me anyway, but, and they shouldn't. I'm not a budget expert. Well, a little bit. But keep your eye on that moving target. If, if somebody is beating their chest about balancing their budget and what great financial condition they're in, you need to ask them, well, what's your OPEB? What's your full funded rate on your retirement system, you know?
And that, and SERPs is, is for OPEB. So, so PERS is a much larger unfunded liability, and in some cases, it's not even comprehensible to some larger cities. But in terms of building savings, you have to build in the savings where you either issue some kind of debt to, to take advantage of the, that environment. In this case, it's a little, little bit more difficult because of rising interest rates, but we're still in an inverted nature in terms of how yield happens, meaning that it's backwards. Usually on long-term stuff, you get a higher yield, but in this case, since there's that much uncertainty, you get a higher yield on the short-term stuff. So the short-term products are more expensive than stuff that's spread out over thirty years. The unfunded part of this whole thing, we go through this as a kind of a pay-as-you-go situation. So every two years, there's an actuarial that's, well, in case of PERS, they just send you whatever the increase is. We're, we're at their, we're at their mercy. Unless we pull that from them and we issue bonds and we control that. So anyway, but again, that's a discussion for a different day. Or, or tonight, if you want.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. Coon. So we are here to receive your staff report and approve the policy as submitted, and I'm sure we're going to start receiving on a later date.
Yeah.
Procedure. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the policy as submitted. Mr. Lamas?
Oh, yeah, I had a comment or question.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Um, so greater yield, greater exposure?
Um, yes, but again, it, the, the yield in LAF is because it, it has to be liquid and, and it's pooled for the purpose of liquidity. So you have So you have different agencies, so that, so in terms of credit risk, you can't individualize that, it's just everybody. In terms of what we pulled this to use as a sweep account, it's their agency money markets. So money markets are, are cash equivalents, and so there's not really any credit risk there. Plus, the way the policy's written, they have to be invested in, in any product with people that have to manage over half a billion dollars. Goldman Sachs, I don't know if you've heard of them, they're, they're pretty good at this stuff, and it's an agency-backed money market, so it just ha, and in this environment, these money markets are only going to keep up, they're, they're kind of adjusted for inflation. So when the Fed raises the rates, those raise, not at the same, at the same manner. So we keeping up with that, but we still have great, no credit exposure, and the yield is just better. It's just, a lot of stuff is better than a checking account, which has zero. Actually, it's, it's, it has a cost, because FDIC was telling us as such. And then LEAF, which is, we couldn't put any more money into it.
Thank you for that. One other commoner question is, how is this, or this new investment strategy, how, with those new firms, how have they fared in past down markets?
So again, it's, we haven't invested into any, any bonds, and again, we're investing in a five-year period. So we're not, we're not investing in long-term products, and the investment curve is inverted, so we get pretty decent. And we are all, we're a hold to maturity, and this is where we're not going to be trading anything. So in terms of, of price sensitivity, when you're talking about equities versus bonds, and we'd only be in, well, there's some capacity for equities, but, but not much, but most of these are going to be double-A corporate bonds. That means big companies, big, a lot of cash on their balance sheet. So I guess I'm making a really long answer out of, like, it's okay. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's better, and they fare okay. Where it gets into the weeds and the reason why the government code took derivative trading out and trading in general, and hold to maturity a thing, is because over a period, there's, there could be a downturn and a recovery, and if you hold to maturity, you don't have price sensitivity, because, and I don't want to give a finance lesson, but in terms of bond pricing and downturns and people moving from equities to bonds and, and, you know, supply and demand, that changes that. We're not, we're not susceptible to that, because we don't, we don't actively trade.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lamas. Ms. Lewis, any questions? Now I'll entertain the motion to approve the policy as submitted. Mr. Lamas?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, I have a motion to approve the policy as submitted.
I have a second. Ms. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposed? All right, it passes. Now we'll move on to the next item, item 11, the review, the amended annual report of the Los Banas Downtown Property and Business Improvement District, LBDPBID. And we'll go to interim finance director, Mr. Coon, and economic development. Who first?
Well, we're going to tag team this one between Brent and I. We're, yes, we're going to work together. But based on the August 3rd city council meeting, the interim finance director went through the, the financials and recommended some changes, and the downtown association committed to making those changes and bringing it back to tonight's meeting. So they, the city council had requested back on August 3rd that the budget activities be itemized and reported in the annual report, so that's one of the changes. And then the interim finance director requested changes to the fiscal year of the annual report so that it would follow the government fiscal year. So it, it was changed to start July 1st and end June 30th. And so the annual report was revised. I, I believe it meets the satisfaction of the interim finance director. And the important things to know, within the revised annual report, is the, now the cost allocation for each of the categories within the annual report within the PBID's management district plan. It's allocated perspective into the 2223 fiscal year of the programs that they will be providing in those categories. Anything I left off?
No, that, that was it, and I think that that, that was the recommendation, that, that they give a little more detail in terms of the budgeting. One thing that will be different, I think, than in the past is, is that we've informed them to be included in the budget process, which is going to start in April. So there can be an easier pivot if, if the council sees something that, that they don't like in the report, and that instead of having to approve these reports and the funding increases after the fiscal year starts, it can be done prior.
All right, thank you. I'll go through the council to see if there's any questions. Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Lamas?
I was hoping that, to see a little more detail. Hopefully, next time, we can have a little more details to where the money came from, specifically what events, salaries, things like that.
Okay.
If possible, without getting into a...
I can forward that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Lewis?
I'll concur with Councilmember Yamas. What is given to us, I, I think, is probably at best what was understood at this particular time between council and the downtown association, giving a prospective budget. However, I would also like to see more detail, and I, I would assume that this budget that's given to us is from monies that have been allocated to them based on what's collected from the property owners. But I, I would like to see it broken down more, because I, you know, I didn't realize that salaries, payroll taxes, rent was paid out of this portion. I thought that came out of their 501(c) portion. So being that these items are listed for this year, I, I would like to see a breakdown a bit more on who's getting salaries, what those breakdowns are in them, and payroll taxes, just a, a bit more definitive than just categorically, we're paying payroll, we're paying taxes, this kind of thing. So, yeah, I, I would like to see it a bit more detailed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Nothing else. So if no one else has any more questions, we received the staff report, and we'll approve, make a motion to approve the amended annual report as submitted. Do I have any motion? Mr. Lamas?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the annual budget report as submitted.
And a second. Mr. Jones?
I'll second that, Mayor Protem.
Is all in favor?
Aye.
All right. The annual report is submitted, has been approved. We'll move on to our next item, item 12, council member request, continuing discussion regarding the continued operation, closure of the rail trail encampment. And we'll turn to Police Chief, Mr. Brucie.
Mr. Mayor Protem, council members, staff. This is just a follow-up discussion from the August 17th council meeting in regards to the encampment behind Home Depot, so I'll get right into it. Start some background. The funding for this project was approved back in January of 2022, the January 5th council meeting. The site was created in February 2022 and opened to the public in March. It's a collaboration of a number of different agencies. The site was, the enclosure, and I'll show you what that is again, just to remind you here in a moment. Collaboration between the city, the county, Bethel Community Church, Salvation Army, the Community Action Agency, the Merced County Rescue Mission, New Direction, a number of agencies who all had input on what we are going to try to accomplish out there and how we're going to work together to meet that goal. Fast forward to August 17th of this year, we had a city council meeting, agenda item, regarding the continued operation of the closure of the camp. Staff was directed at that meeting to look for options and research alternative locations for the camp and bring those alternatives back to council for further discussion. That's what we're going to do tonight. So while we're going to discuss longer-term solutions, just a little bit at the very end, tonight, we're going to focus our attention on some of the alternative locations. This here is just a photograph of the existing camp. To the north of the camp is 2151 East Pacheco, and to the east is the Gilbert Gonzalez Apartment Complex.
Just that picture right there, I just want real fast, that's the picture before the encampment actually was built.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The red represents what we designed the camp to look like. But that's not a current picture of a satellite photo of the actual camp. It wasn't there. So for the purposes of tonight's conversation, we are simply going to discuss vacant city properties that we own outright, the city of Los Banas. We're not going to talk about the rail trail proper, the actual rail trail. If you look at the rail trail between Second and, all the way down to Place Road, it's a walking path, except for a portion between 152 and Place Road, it's, it's just a dirt bank. It's not owned by the city of Los Banas. Well, some of it isn't. Otherwise, on, on either side of the trail, probably about 15 feet, that is owned by the city. We're not talking about that portion either. We're also not going to talk about, for the purpose of this discussion, neighborhood parks. Not going to talk about the park basins, the storm water, storm drain basins, things like parking lots and some of the other things. We would be here a very long time if we did that. I would say we've probably got between 70 and 80 different parcels of land that we could discuss, if you were to throw in parks, parking lots, building structures and things like that. So tonight, we're going to break down those vacant properties into four different pieces. The airport parcels, those are the parcels located in and around the airport, Public Works parcels, parcels, those are located in and around the wastewater treatment plant. The current campsites, there's two locations, and then the downtown parcels. Majority of them, minus the wastewater treatment plant parcels, are all part of that DLA transfer of, of land from the old redevelopment agency through the DLA to the city of Los Banas. This is just an overall picture of the entire city of those parcels that we're going to talk about tonight, that I talked about breaking up into four different pieces. So we'll get right into that. The first set of parcels that we're going to look at tonight are the airport parcels. I brought those up first because staff is really inclined to say we should stay away from these parcels. Between our commitment with the FAA, the airport, the liability that exists with it, we actually looked at this, this parcel and all of the others when we decided to put the, the camp out at its current location and decided against that just because of the liability that would, could be caused with individuals, God forbid, get on the, on the runway and, and leave shopping carts or other debris and items like that out there. So staff would strongly suggest that we stay away from this location. I will, however, say that there is a small caveat that we can talk about a little bit later. In the Colorado Ball Field, which is the northeast corner of the airport parcel, I think there's a spot there that if the council so desires, could look at for future growth of, or an alternative location for a camp. And again, all of these sites that we're going to talk about, just disclaiming at the beginning, they're just all options that we're going to say, we're throwing those out there. Do I think the Colorado Ball Field is a place where we put a homeless camp and we've got skate parks and the youth of our community? Probably not. But I want to throw all those parcels out there. Move on to what we're referring to tonight as the Public Works Parcels. A majority of them surround the wastewater treatment plant. You'll see that the lagoons that are out there, the ponds, are not in the yellow outline. The yellow outline represents city parcels. The lagoons are of city parcels, but obviously, we're not going to discuss having camps on the lagoon, so we didn't even, we didn't even cover those or outline those in yellow. A majority of those parcels out there are for the growth and future development of the wastewater treatment plant. They're bordered by wetlands and the wastewater treatment plant. I will point out two parcels in this patch that, actually, you discussed one of those parcels previously tonight in item number nine, and that has to do with the property that is just east of the ag complex, the old bottle dump. And we're, because of what's going on with that parcel and the closure with that, the contamination that, that is there with that parcel, we don't, staff doesn't think that that's, that's a good parcel to move to as well. Wish it were. I wish it were. I wish a lot of these parcels were, but because of the item that the Public Works Director just discussed, we're not really looking at that site. There's another parcel to the northeast corner, I'm sorry, to the top-left side of that picture. It is a very small rectangular piece of land that is going to be designed for future build-out, storm water basin. I believe there might be some plans to potentially put a city well out there. I just want to bring that up. It's on Nanty's Road, north of the city. So I'll stop there real quick, just to see if there's any catch-up. But those are the, those are the first two sets of parcels that we're looking at. Okay, I'll keep going. The next set of parcels that we're looking at are the current campsite parcels. The parcel on the left is exactly where the camp is now, that picture I just showed you with the red outline. The parcel on the right has been discussed more than one time amongst staff and with the council. We're calling that the water tank parcel. It's also the parcel where we predict future growth in our fire department, EOC, perhaps a Public Works Corporation yard. The problem with that parcel is that entire piece of land is constrained by a land use covenant when we took ownership of it. That land use covenant restricts residential use of that land without further cleanup that, of that piece of property. So you either need to cap it and not penetrate that cap, or you've got to remove whatever amount of dirt that the Water Board says that we have to remove based on testing of that piece of land. But that entire parcel that's outlined in, in yellow on the right-hand side has a land use covenant that prohibits residential use of that property. Very unfortunate, but we, we double-checked, the city attorney is opined on the matter, and, and we're pretty confident in that, that statement. The last set of parcels that are just bare dirt in the city of Los Banas comparable to our current parcel out there where the camp is, are what we're calling the downtown parcels. There's nine of them on this page. I'm going to start at the top-left side of the page and work my way down. If you move to the next slide in your set of, in your printed PowerPoint, you'll see and be able to follow along with exactly what I'm talking about. I'll get there myself. Site number one and two, again, starting at the top, working our way down diagonally to the bottom of the page on the right side. We put those there because they are in process of being transferred to the city of Los Banas. We anticipate that they will be transferred over to the city of Los Banas use sometime later this year, maybe the first of next year. Those two pieces of land are at the corner of Second and H Street. A large majority of Site One and all of Site Two are contained in a gated area, a wrought iron fenced area, that is capped with pavement. It's a rail spur. I don't think it's used very often, but I have seen train cars all the way at the end of that rail spur. So those are the first two properties. We do not own them yet. We will soon, and when we do, we can have further discussions about those two particular pieces of property as potential relocation sites. We'll move to item number, I'm sorry, location number three, which is at the corner of Second and G Street. I'm hoping you can see those okay on your, on your handout. Site number three has no restrictions. It's bordered by residential homes, local businesses, and the rail trail. That is a potential site for relocation of our camp. Site number four is a little bit trickier. There's actually two parcels there. You can see that those, Site number four there runs the length of ground from Second Street to Fourth Street, just north of H Street. That parcel that is highlighted, we can basically double that parcel or flip it over and have two parcels like that. Site number four has some contamination, so what I'm showing on my, what I listed on my PowerPoint is that there is some partial restrictions under a land use covenant. Primarily, it's on the eastern portion of the, the lot, closer to Fourth Street. They just remediated the area not long ago. You saw the fences that were up there, they were removing dirt. But because of the length and the width of it, the size and shape of that land, that's potentially something that you could look at as an alternative site. Site number five is the Henry Miller Plaza. Site number five is the Henry Miller Plaza. Staff is probably inclined to say that that's not an area that we are looking to move this camp to. Obviously, the plaza is there to the right or to the east of the plaza bordered by Seventh Street is our discussions with the museum to move in that location. And if you go further west, west of the plaza, west of the old Comcast Building, from where Fifth Street dead ends into that parcel. If you're looking at the at the handout where Fifth Street dead ends and hits that parcel, probably everything very close to the extension of Fifth Street, all the way to Fourth Street, is committed, is restricted by a land use covenant. So Site Number Five, there's not a lot of property there that is free and clear. Could we could we look at it? Yeah, but it's it's not ideal position, ideal site for the relocation of our camp. Site Number Six is at the southeast corner of Seventh and G Street. There are no restrictions on that property. It's bordered by the community center, a local business and/or a church, and the rail trail. Sites Number Seven and Eight also not restricted. They are closer to the corner of Ninth and G Street, bordered by the future police department, rail trail, and city yard. And lastly, Site Number Nine, which is closest to the new police department site there at San Juan and G Street, has some partial restrictions. It's large enough to where we think we could put some sort of camp there if council so desired, but the eastern portion of it, closest to the police department, probably the eastern quarter of that entire parcel has a land use covenant. So we'd have to do some more research on that if and the other properties that have LUCs before we move forward with the relocation. Okay, I'm going to stop there. Any questions or clarifications at this point? Okay. Options for the next steps. Number one, first option is, obviously, why we're here tonight, the idea of maintaining, closing, or relocating the existing location. But I want to talk about options number two and number three because they're equally important to us. Option number two is other short term solutions. So as I mentioned previously, there are probably 70 or 80 other pieces of land that the city owns in the form of parks, buildings, Miller and Lux Building, Colorado Ball Field, that council could look at as alternative sites. Council could look at options or staff, council could direct staff to look at options for perhaps a private, private property partnership, excuse me, in developing a lot of land and moving the camp to a private piece of private property. Third, another option, and there's a lot of them, just one of the other ones that we wanted to throw out was council could direct staff to look at smaller locations around town. Instead of having one large site, perhaps you can put several smaller locations. But what I'd like to spend a little bit of time on is the third option there, which is focusing our efforts on realizing long term solutions. And I have a couple of examples there that we are really interested in. First is the permanent local housing allocation. That is a state of California Housing and Community Development Program that allocates funds to cities all across our state for the purpose of assisting in housing, meeting our unmet housing needs of our community. Los Banas has approximately $1.2 million allocated for it through the PLHA program. So the city of Los Banas, through the State Housing and Community Development Program, has a dedicated amount of money, just in excess of $1.2 million that we can use to meet our unmet housing need. Maybe change affect our arena numbers that Stacy's always discussing. We can use it for other things like a project home key, which is the second bullet point that I'd like to talk about. The idea of dealing with the homeless, we do it every day, day in and day out. One of the things I I want to leave you with tonight is whether you choose to maintain where it's at, you choose to close it, you choose to relocate it. Every day I wake up, code enforcement staff wakes up knowing that we're going to deal with homeless issues. Nothing by a decision that you make in item number one today is going to change that. And that's why we think it's really important that we stress the idea of the long term solutions by way of the local housing allocation. Project Home Key, again, I don't go into a lot of detail. Project Home Key, though, is a permanent housing program that allows you to take hotels, motels, converted commercial buildings that are vacant, single family residences, and you convert them into larger permanent housing situations for those experiencing homelessness. You leverage money like the permanent local housing allocation. You leverage money like grant funding from Project Home Key. The governor, as a matter of fact, just just announced Home Key Round Three in late August of this year. So he announced it in in late August. He's making available over $690 million in funding to local communities for us to leverage to build more permanent locations for housing our homeless. But we have to apply for it. We have to have some skin in the game with some funding to match that. And that's where that PLHA dollar comes in. That application process will be available in the spring of 2023. Now, I'm going to go to the third bullet point. And at the staff level, myself and Stacy, we're basically the the department heads that are dealing with this process, the housing of homeless individuals by way of the PLHA program, Home Key, and everything else that we're doing. What I would like the council to consider, I'd like to suggest, is that we need to take another step forward in the path of making our dedicating our effort to doing our best to solving homelessness. We're unique in the sense that we can actually make a difference in our homeless population. We've talked about it before. Our homeless numbers, our unsheltered homeless numbers hover around 100 people. We'll never get every single person off the street, but we have the ability in Los Banas to make a big difference in that unsheltered homeless population. So what I'd like to suggest that council consider, and we can work with the finance department if you so desire, to start looking at options for the creation of a position who deals with homeless coordination, our efforts to move the ball down the field. The police chief probably shouldn't be looking at PLHA grants, Home Key grants. I'm probably the only one in the region that does it as in depth as we do, but it's important to me, so we're there and I'll stay in that course. But we think that it's a good investment for the city to invest more time and energy and effort in staffing for this problem specifically. Okay, I'll stop talking now. I'm going to go back to item number one, which is why we're here. I kind of went over briefly the items of the locations where we could potentially relocate this if you if you choose to. You can maintain it or close it. So I'll go back to item number one. And Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you for the time. I will turn it back over to you now.
Yeah, a quick question on you on that last item, item C. Consider dedicating a staff member. Would that be like an extra code enforcement person?
No. What we're seeing across the valley in the in the state is agencies or communities are starting to hire individuals who do homeless coordination. I'll use our county partner, his name is John Checkley. He is an assistant director to the Human Services Agency. Now, it's probably not that high level of a position, but we need someone boots on the ground to manage processes, manage grants, manage ideas, communicate with our partners across the valley on how they're doing things, to come up with ideas, to be our person to go to as it relates to solving our homeless issue. Code enforcement, the police department, we're still going to be boots on the ground and we will be until this problem is solved. We're okay with that. But I think we need to start looking towards the future of how do we put a better foot forward to actually solve this problem? And we do that with additional staffing dedicated for that.
Appreciate it. So I'll go through council, see if there's any questions. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor Protem. So it looks about third page into this presentation here. If we were to remove the encampment, the fenced off area, what's to say the homeless individuals wouldn't just camp close to the fence between the Mobile Home Park and that parcel?
There's nothing, nothing.
There's nothing.
No.
So.
In fact, I don't mean to cut you off, but as you've seen that satellite image, that's that's they were right.
That's what it was before the fence.
Yes, sir.
Is there homeless individuals camping up against that fence right now? Or last time you checked?
No, last time I checked, no. There are some that are outside of that red fence line that we showed in that one of the previous pictures, but they're not up against that fence line, no.
So it it really seems like we're trying to wash. It's like washing a driveway going, starting from the gutter up. If you don't have enough pressure on it, it's just going to run right back down to you. It really seems like we need a lot more personnel dedicated to this full time to make this happen. So it doesn't matter where we move it, what the homeless fenced off area looks like or what it's made out of, because we know that the there is homeless individuals that can or that are just very destructive, that will tear up anything, even block walls from what I've seen out there.
Yeah.
So it really seems like the only way to really help mitigate this, because that's what we're doing. We're not solving it. We're mitigating it from getting worse. And we're trying to improve it to where maybe it's, you know, 10, 20% less as bad as what it was the previous year. The only way to do that is to have more personnel, more code enforcement, more sworn police officers that can be present out there. I've also seen firsthand going out there is that you have, not all homeless are the same. They don't all like each other and they all don't like being next to each other. And so it almost seems like you need different pockets where you can have kind of controlled areas. Because let's face it, you get the real bad boys out there and they don't want to be anywhere near anybody. You know, and one idea was maybe have an encampment close to the new police station where they can kind of be monitored. But you're not going to get the real bad ones, the real problem, problem children out there going near the police station. So it this is definitely an uphill battle. It's not easy and it seems like the only way to mitigate this from getting worse is to put more manpower on it. I could be wrong. Does that sound about right?
No, I think all of the all of the points you've made are accurate.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lomas?
I agree that this is just a mitigation effort. I think it's throughout the state and throughout most of the country that's, well, the one affected by this ruling. If you could, regarding that covenant, land use covenant.
Yes, sir.
Could you define residents as outlined in that covenant?
I don't have it before me. I think the restriction created by the land use covenant is a health and safety issue created by the chemicals that are left in the ground. And I think primarily it's arsenic. And so by way of agreeing to take on the property, we agreed to that land use covenant. And the state water board says that the the chemicals and the concentrations of those chemicals is too high for residential. I'll turn, I see Bill wants to talk. I appreciate that, Bill. I'll let you answer that a little bit more clearly.
So it's not only just residential, but it's also schools and daycare, anywhere where people congregate for long periods of time. Residential use, they they don't really define it in a very succinct way, but I think we could all agree that a homeless encampment is a residential use. It's it's not a temporary use. The only thing that's allowed in those areas are commercial and industrial uses without further cleanup of the hotspot areas. The main concern is the arsenic levels in those areas, which was a residue from the use of herbicides by Union Pacific Railroad. And those those herbicides have moved and migrated all over those properties close to where the rail lines used to be. And those areas were heavily studied by the DLA to determine which areas had concentrations above the human health levels for residential use. So we can use those properties for commercial and industrial uses and/or you can cap those properties. Or in the final, the final alternative is to actually go in and remediate them by removing removing soil, which is prohibitively expensive. I think when the city has accepted those properties, the kind of the the outlook was to maintain the rail trail as a recreational walking trail, which is not prohibited, and also to look at that area as a commercial and, you know, a commercial area for future development.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It helps clarify.
So in my opinion, I don't know that the residential use doesn't specifically say encampment, but I believe it meets the definition of a residential use.
I appreciate that. However, we would have to look at law.
Well, certainly, it's the water boards. It's the water board's covenant.
That's why, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. But let's go back to personnel and staffing and additional manpower resources. Is it your suggestion to we, from what I understand?
Can you speak up just a little?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know the volume. I'm not able to turn it up on this thing.
All right. You mentioned increasing manpower, right? And that's discussed. So you'd want to hire a or assign or create a position that is not code enforcement, not police, but more of a liaison with our other partners, municipalities, state, county, et cetera, to be able to problem solve and resource the funding of these type of things? Is that more?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, let me start that by saying it was a suggestion for the first step of staff research on the idea of how do we build a program to better address this problem more so than perhaps I or Stacy can do in amongst all the other duties? So yes, to answer your question, yes, that's.
Okay. Yeah, because I think that that's what the county, obviously, more resources, but that's their approach. They have, they created the deputy director with John Checkley specifically for homelessness. So I think that that could generate some gains for us immediately through either hard work, they're, you know, plying through some of these difficulties. So I would, I would invite more discussion on that to see at what level this position is. Duties, will they have satellite duties as well, et cetera, so that we can utilize them as much as possible when not actively engaged with this specific situation or issue? Chief, thank you very much. As always, very well that up presentation. It's actually made it more difficult because of the restrictions that we have, you know, the health issues, the cost to remove, the health issues. I'm glad that we have this discussion, that we're demonstrating that we do care. I think the council does care. And we're just, it's not an easy solution because we have restrictions and mandates that we have to comply with. And then the big thing is dollars.
Yeah.
So I welcome, though, that suggestion of additional individual to be specifically brought in to be a that liaison, that go to person that is dealing with this. Because you're right, police chief, you should not be doing this. Not that you're not capable, but we have other issues in the city that would probably be.
Yeah, the more police officers and code enforcement, yeah, we need to work on that one.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lomas. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Some of this discussion tonight is, in my opinion, futuristic and how we can solve the problem going forward as far as something more permanent. But we have an immediate problem right now, and that is the continual complaints from the residents at the trailer park. And how are we going to mitigate and relieve them? I don't, I don't think that, in my opinion, some of the parcels, you know, that the city owns, they're they're all next to residents again, with the exception of a few. So it's it's like, you know, moving them from one problem area to make another problem area. And then we'll have a whole set of new residents here in the chambers complaining about the homeless problem in in their area. One of the items that you listed on here was looking at an option of developing a private partnership, a private property partnership out there. Have we looked at that? Have we talked to anyone that has land that we can do a private partnership with that doesn't affect residential area?
We've had some very brief staff discussions on the topic. In order to accomplish that, in a lot of cases, you're pushing it out into the county. And one of the, one of the things that we foresee happening is that if we push it too far out in the county, no one's going to want to go to it. And so we're going to build something that no one will go to. So we're trying to balance that. We haven't got into in-depth conversations with private property owners, either land developers or people that just might have an acre of land. We haven't had those intense conversations with them yet, no, to answer your question.
You know, under our previous mayor, Mr. Volalta, I believe the city had, he had worked with the county to make arrangements for having the homeless encampment out at the farm encampment on Henry Miller Road and 156. And somehow or another, that fell by the wayside. And we had the same issues that staff had concern about, which is remoteness. Now, I know that could be a problem, but you've got people coming in from the county, you have people from churches going to the encampment. And I don't anticipate that that would change, you know, that people from the county would go out and offer services that I'm sure in most cases they turn down. And that's why, you know, we've got this enormous problem, is that they don't want to take the services from the county, because these are the people that will not go into the Project Home Key. These are people who are seriously mentally ill by reason of mental illness, drugs, or alcohol. And it's a challenge when you now have a state that won't put these people in a hospital to treat them anymore. So are we going to continue to disturb the peace of people who live and pay taxes in our city? And I'm not trying to be cruel, but you just can't have this kind of mixture going on. And I know there are people out there who really have a heart for helping them. I've had my position in that as well, and I know how it works, but we're dealing with a different world now when it comes to treating people who are mentally ill. Nobody in the state of California, as far as the legislation is concerned, wants to lock them in a state hospital, treat them, and get them to the point where they can be manageable again in a community. So with that in mind, for the safety of our community, I think it's appropriate that we find someplace, even if it's remote, to have people be in one area. Yeah, you're going to have bad actors, we've got bad actors out there now who don't want to live next to each other. That's just par for the core when you're dealing with mental illness. So my position is regardless of the restrictions, we've got all these covenant restrictions on land, I don't know how the Boise case works on that, because the Boise case says that they can go stay anywhere they want to on public property, whether there's contamination or not. So what we're trying to do, what I hope we're going to try to do, is find something quickly to relocate this housing and put it in a place where they have some safety, but we're not having our residents feel like they have to look over their shoulders to have needles in their residential area, to possibly have people breaking in, having their property stolen. We have heard this time and time again, month after month. And every city in the state of California is having issues trying to recruit police officers. That's not going to change the problem. So how do we fix this? By finding something, a place where we can put them? And yes, we're still going to have to have staff go out there and check on stuff, but at least we won't have people living in fear. Because you know what? If they were next to my house, and I think any councilperson sitting up here, their neighborhood would be up here complaining too. So our, in my opinion, our only solution is to find something in an area where they're not going to affect residential people for fear of their life and their property. So can maybe we work with the county again temporarily, because that encampment out there, I think, is probably pretty close to not being occupied again? And can we work something out with the county or the housing authority, whoever has jurisdiction over that camp out there, to maybe use that for a short period of time to give us the opportunity to find maybe a piece of land or a partnership with a private person to do an encampment? We just have to think out of the box here, not try to find a reason to keep it where it is. That's kind of my take on it right now.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Jones has a, Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mr. Protem. You know, I think we all kind of agree that we need more manpower, and I don't see a ton of officers lining up knocking on our doors looking for jobs. So it seems like we're going to have to find more resources to, one, retain officers, two, to provide incentives to gain new officers in more positions. I think that would probably be the faster fix on this. So that might be a discussion we have to have here soon, and hopefully sooner than later.
Appreciate it, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So it's my understanding that you're going to continue to look for a location, okay. Second, where the current enclosures right now, the area between the north wall and the south wall of the mobile home park, that area that is causing problems, because they, sometimes they move up to that and cut the fence. We had the RV that caught on fire and ruined a portion of the fence. Is there a way to use concertina wire along that triple strand with steel stakes in order to do that? I know that they'll try to destroy it, but it's a pretty formidable obstacle.
Yeah, we've, ironically, we've had a lot of good luck keeping them off of that fence. The young lady spoke about the RV that caught on fire, yeah, caused about $2,000 in damage. The code enforcement budget paid for the repair, about $1,000 at this point, repair of the barbed wire fencing that runs along the top, and then five holes that were cut previously. We don't see a lot of that intentional damage. It happens, I'm not denying any of that, but it certainly happens. But we have a good relationship with the fence vendor who does the repairs. Minus this most recent RV that caught on fire, I don't have the funding for that. But come mid-year, Brent has already shaken his head yes, that he's going to find a way to give us a little bit of money to allow us to do more things like that in that particular spot, so.
Thank you, Chief. I look forward to.
Yeah.
Hopefully better results next time. And I would, how much time would you need in order to come back with something?
I recall the conversations about the migrant camp, and it, I think at the end of the day, we were told no. Initially, we were told yes for a very small window of time. It was like November to March that we could have it. And then they came back, if I recall correctly, and said no. We were going to line up MCAG and the bus and all kinds of different resources to go back and forth from the camp into town, and that didn't ultimately come to fruition. We'll continue to look for those private property partnerships. I wanted to get back to you with this one. It could be a couple months. I could probably have a turnaround with the Housing HUD, who I think it is that handles the migrant workforce camp out there. I could probably get an answer for you that rather quickly. The private property partnership would most likely include rent or a lease and all kinds of other resource dedication in order for us to accomplish that. So that could take months.
Very well. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Jones, did you have another question?
No, that's all.
Okay. Back to Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. I just had a follow-up question. Well, I can't find.
Why are you looking at that, Ms. Lewis?
Anyway, you had made mention, I think there was like a million point something for funding, have we already received it from the state?
No, we have not. We are in the process of applying. We've reached out to a consultant that the city has worked with in the past who has experience doing this process, and we're going to try to utilize them. We have a kind of a short turnaround to get it accomplished the end of October, but we should be able to get that accom, oh, I was going to say, I wasn't doing that. We should be able to get that accomplished and returned or submitted to the HUD before the deadline. So we're pretty confident about that. We just have to come up with a program with what we're going to spend that money on. There are ten different, excuse me, ten different funding criterias, program criterias under which we can utilize that money on. Much like Brent commented, it's a different conversation. The idea of Home Key and housing of homeless individuals in our community permanently is a very big conversation that needs to be vetted with this council before we start taking steps in that process, in that direction. But I think for the time being, working through the city manager's office, we can apply for that grant without too much of a commitment so that we secure that money. And that's our goal.
So with Project Home Key, where we are renting certain rooms from a hotel here in town, how much is that costing us? Is it on an annual basis or semi-annual that we make payment?
It's monthly. It's about $98,000 a month. And as homeless housing goes, that's expensive. Project Home Key, where you're providing a permanent housing, and then you can use HUD vouchers from the individuals in the program to pay for your room and board and the maintenance and operation of the facility, you end up having much more of a closer tool wash than you are Project Room Key, you're just, I don't want to say throwing the money away, but you're spending that money and there's no return, other than temporarily housing individuals.
So I know there was talk about maybe trying to acquire a hotel to turn it into
Yes, ma'am.
A Project Room Key on a permanent basis. That 1.6 million, and is there any other money that we can apply for out there, matching money, to help us maybe look at that for the future, for that particular hotel that's there now, or even if the owner has considered selling it for the purpose of that? Yes, it's quite expensive, and I know that at some point, we're not going to be able to afford to continue to do that. And then we'll have those people, you know, out and on the street again. So this is a twofold project. It's the Project Room Key, and how do we get, you know, that permanent housing going, and the homeless encampment of people who just will not go in, no matter what you do, they won't go in. So it's, it's a hard problem to solve, and I agree. If there's a county resource out there, we need to engage that person in helping us figure out how to get grant money, how to access more funding for the city of Los Banos. I know when we were at the League of Cities, there was a vendor there on Prop 27, and the information that I was able to receive is yes, there will be money for all 57 counties in the state of California, but they will be, that money will be going to the large cities, not to small communities such as ourselves. So if that's the truth, and it ends up being that way, we're still in the same boat. So I do appreciate all the work that you've put into this and the enduring heartaches. I can only imagine you have sleepless nights behind this. And, you know, how do we resolve the issues of, you know, making our residents feel safe? Certainly, if we had some criminal activity going on in the neighborhood, our police staff would squash that in a heartbeat. But we have this situation where we've got a Ninth Circuit court ruling hanging over our heads and tying our hands to a certain extent, but we still can, you know, I'm hoping that we can figure out something quickly, rather than later, to help relieve the problem in our city and to help relieve the residents who have come to us. And my heart goes out to them, and I know yours does too, to live the way that they have to live with the fears that they have. So I don't know that we have a resolution tonight, but, you know, I guess, I don't know if we have to give directive as to where we want to go from here, but that's my suggestion is to try to get a partnership on some land and, you know, see if we can maybe obtain usage of the farm encampment out there on 165 and Henry Miller Road.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
So Chief, I'm going to say, all of us up here, we don't like the situation that everyone's in. We are here to try to find some type of solutions. We are, I'm sure we're going to fight it every day. I want them to understand, they're not being ignored. You guys are working on it every day. We're here to try to find solutions, and you know, that's, when we get that nice solution, then you know, we'll try to move forward with it. You know, I'm not sure if anybody has, have anybody ever reached out yet to the other cities? Maybe Nutmer said, maybe, you know, further cities away that you see that's having, that's got a good idea that they've been working with, how they've handled it. I know you were talking about possibly dedicating a staff member. That's possibly something, you know, that person would be able to do. But maybe reaching out and just see what other cities have different ideas. I'm like Ms. Lewis, you know, I see if we close the encampment, I think it just makes the situation out there worse, just because they're not going to go nowhere. We can move them down the street, they're going to probably come back to that location. And then they're going to come right back up to the fence line. Personnel, I'm sure we definitely need more personnel just to be able to monitor this. And I understand the difficulties of finding personnel. That's another solution that we got to come up with. But we are not ignoring the fact that we have a problem out there. We just got to keep moving forward and trying to find that solution that's going to help out with our homeless situation that we have here.
If I can address two of the council members' questions. As far as funding, there is non-competitive funding, which is that PLHA dollar, but there are also a lot of competitive grant funding sources that we can apply for, but it's all based on a competitive edge. It's all based on who writes the best grant application. And that's where an individual who works for us, who does things like that, grant writing, whether it's a consultant or an employee, has the ability to dedicate that time and go after every single grant there is, because you use it all as match for programs like Project Home Key. So you might not end up spending a ton of our general fund dollars, but you're using competitive, non-competitive grant fundings matched with program money from the state of California. The other thing is, we are not ignoring the folks at 2151. We're looking at ways to still deploy staff and resources out there. COVID really affected our volunteer program, but we've even got them out there at night and during the day, patrolling that complex throughout the day and night. And if it's at night, we've got them using the rotating lights, and we're trying to be high visibility. So yeah, we're not perfect, but we're certainly doing what we can. I appreciate all the comments.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, council member, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Right now, we're just receiving, our received staff report and the direction on how to proceed. So staff have their direction? We'll move to the next item. That's item 13, advisement of public notices. And we have one report, and we'll turn to community and economic development, Mr. Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So we will be holding a public hearing on September 28th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. The item that will be discussed twenty-eighth at six PM here in the council chambers. Um, the item that will be discussed is the general plan twenty-fourty-two update, and the draft environmental impact report, as well as the final environmental impact report. Um, the planning commission will be the recommending body. It will be a public hearing. Uh, they will be a recommending body to the city council, and it is anticipated, um, that sometime in October, the, um, general plan will come before the city council, um, for approval, um, probably October, November. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. And now, we'll move to item fourteen, the city manager report. We'll go to city manag- uh, interim city manager, Mr. Willman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Pro Tim, and, uh, council members. I'd, I'd like to keep this brief, and I'm sure you would appreciate my keeping it brief. I think that we have heard, uh, that, cash-wise, we're in a very good position, and I think Brent's done an excellent job in deciphering what the local agency investment fund, or LEAF, is, the huge amounts of, of cash that the city has. Um, and rather than use those numbers to develop a bit of security, I, I think that's a dangerous thing to do. So, I'd simply, uh, I mean, we ought to be grateful for that, yes, but we also ought to be looking clear-eyed at what's ahead of us. Um, we've, you, some of you know that, I hope all of you know that last weekend, I was in the Bay Area, meeting with, uh, some, um, engineering firms, um, trying to get a second and third opinion as to wastewater, freshwater, stormwater. And if we just take the wastewater component, um, my question is this, how many years, and you've, you've seen that seven pond setup that we have, it's a secondary treatment. Um, the state obviously would prefer to push us into, I think, a tertiary treatment environment. Um, I've been through this many times, actually. So, that's hugely expensive. It's largely funded by user rates, and my interest is in seeing just how much capacity we have for how many years, given our projected level of development. Nobody can answer that right now. I think that's fair to say. I certainly can't. Um, if we were to pick a number of between two and ten, each one representing a year, um, we might be able to throw a, a dart at it and be more accurate. So, we've got four-point-nine millions of gallons per day of capacity, rated anyway, in those seven ponds. We have daily usage of three-point-five to three-point-seven. I'm looking at Neuron, he's, he's the expert here. Um, so, the, the question becomes, what can we do? We're working on a number of different, uh, strategies. One is obviously to get a more finite estimate, and maybe to allow people like me to breathe a little easier. Uh, one might be to, uh, look at expansion. Uh, but either way you cut it, we are going to be faced with wastewater, stormwater, and freshwater issues. To bring us back down to reality in the financial end of things, we've got, um, naturally occurring chromium-six, uh, some naturally occurring, um, other, other substances have got to be treated. Now, the chrome-six, uh, I've heard estimates ranging up to ninety million dollars just to treat it. I hope I'm not overstating that top-line number. Thirty to ninety in that range, Neuron? Well, that, that'll take a big bite if it's not bonded and funded some other way, and I'll turn to Brent for that. Um, so, we've, we've got to be concerned about that. All aspects of water. We're meeting with CCID, we're meeting with Grasslands Water District, we're meeting with, uh, San Andreas Water Company, to see if there isn't some way of collaboration where we can develop some credits, uh, for water and expand our capacity. I won't go into detail on that, because I'll put you all to sleep. Um, I think I've mentioned the, uh, Municipal Finance Officers Association want to commend our staff again. Uh, eight years running to get that award is really significant, and, um, we're, we're proud of all of them. I do think that there's some issues on the horizon related to personnel. We have currently in recruitment for, uh, s- city manager, uh, finance chief, uh, fire chief, and, and others. And it's going to, to be interesting to see how many folks we can attract. Um, I would say that my initial review of our critical positions and higher levels especially, and, uh, really all throughout the organization indicates that we're, we are behind in our traditional, uh, salary survey base. What that means is this, you can't just take base salaries. You've got to look at total compensation. It's been a while since, uh, that's been looked at. And, uh, my, my considered judgment is that, uh, uh, we're going to have to get involved. I think we're about a year, I'm looking at both chiefs, we're a year away from, uh, negotiations? More? We, we have received communications from the employee organi- some of the employee organizations, because of the rapid rate of inflation, wouldn't it be wise to take some of that on sooner rather than later? That's a business decision for you all to make. Uh, I'm not prepared to make a recommendation at this time, other than to put it on your radar. Um, we have got to be able to recruit and retain qualified employees for this city to grow. And so, I'll leave it at that. You know, the, the definition, under the governing statute of negotiations, the Myers-Millieus-Brown, is that hours, wages, and then this, this phrase that we all like, other terms and conditions of employment. It's as broad as, you know, you can drive a truck through it. But it's been the law for decades, and it's not going away. So, we're gonna keep that in mind. We'll be back to you with some specific recommendations, uh, just as soon as, uh, as we can. Um, I, 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 I just want to leave you with something positive. I, you know, I've, I've been in a lot of jurisdictions. I really have. And, uh, this homeless issue, I was the, uh, director of the Human Services Agency in Merced County, on two occasions, one in the mid-eighties and the other in the mid-nineties. It, homelessness has, it, the, the folks who are homeless have not changed a basic profile. We did two statewide studies on this. Um, I think the last one was in the nineties, and it, and it yields the same results. We have three major conditions that homeless people are facing. One is developmental disability, where, you know, fifteen or twenty percent of us have that either mental or physical we're born with. Two is a addiction to substance, uh, whether it's drugs, alcohol, or, or mushrooms, or whatever you want to call it. I didn't, you know. And, um, three is mental illness, and very frequently, all three of them together. So, I really appreciate the work that this council has done and the efforts you've made, because, you know, as I mentioned the other day, you have shown what I consider to be a relentless attention to the homeless problem. And that's what it's gonna take, because it's not going away, ever, ever. It's not going away. So, you can't ever say, well, we've made it. You may try different strategies, and I, I'll come back to that a little later. We may want to try some kind of, um, review of best practices. Some of us went to this Long Beach, uh, uh, California League of Cities, and were able to take notes. Um, but either way, we've got to be relentless in our efforts, because it's just not going away. And to, to utilize sworn officers and to be subject to the costs of doing that, really need to be analyzed, and I think we can do that. So, with that, Mr. Pro Tim, I'm, I'm done. I'll hold myself open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Willman. All right, we'll move on to the next item, item fifteen, a report update on Merced County Associations of Governments, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE, and Measure V Committee, and nothing to report at this time. So, we'll now move on to item sixteen, council members' reports. And we'll start with Mr. Jones.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I don't have a report, but I do have a request to be placed on the October fifth, um, meeting. I'd like to have a discussion, and a nomination, and a vote to appoint, uh, a mayor at that time. And that's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, move to Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim. Um, I have a few items, and first of all, I want to thank the city of Los Banos and the residents of Los Banos for allowing me to go to the League of Cities. Um, the one thing that I always learn, uh, no matter what classes we take, is that we're not alone in our problems. Everybody has the same problem, it's just larger, wh- if it's a larger city. And, um, so, m- most councils are frustrated because of all the restrictions that are coming down from the state of California, and it, it makes it really difficult to try to figure out how you're gonna resolve problems, issues, uh, where dollars are coming from to do mandated programs, and the state doesn't want to send any money down to help. So, it, it just continues to go on, this wonderful state that we all once knew, at least some of us, you know, at our age up here. Um, it's, it's not, it's not the same state, California, anymore. It's, it's very problematic, and, um, we, we've got to be real creative in figuring out how we're going to, uh, deal with some of the issues at hand. I, I, I would like to make a request and perhaps get help from our acting city manager in, um, how bids are, uh, put on the agenda for council to see. Um, we have different forms coming from different departments, and I'd like to see it be more unified in what we get in the report, such as, you know, when the project came forward, when the bid goes out, when it comes in. And, um, for instance, tonight, uh, Public Works had the actual bid, uh, for the scoreboards in, in the report. Um, I, I just think, you know, we have too many ways that, uh, different departments are presenting information to council, and I'd like to see that be more uniform in how we receive it, so that we can analyze it and be able to make the judgment on expenditures or, or not expending money. I'd also like to, uh, make a request, um, that staff revisit our fee structure, uh, for the rental of our electronic boards on West Ice Street and the community center as well, because even though the community center just rents it for, uh, events at the community, we still need to revisit our structure, fee structure, and I don't know when that structure, uh, was visited the last time. Um, it, it, it probably was about as long ago as some of the other fees that we've done, or, and, and not very often have structures been ch- changed for our community center. So, I, I think that's something that we need to look at, and update based on inflation, and, uh, the cost of doing business, salary employee, all the things that we have to look at as, as a city in order to make sure that, um, uh, being able to support these items that we want to buy, purchase, and have out there, or already have, that we're keeping up with inflation. Uh, tonight, our, our Public Works Director, uh, when we were looking at the signage that's gonna be put out on the east part of our town, indicated that we don't have specialized training, uh, for our staff to remove the sign. It, it would have to be probably done, if, if, if the staff did it in a more archaic way. But you made mention that in Gilroy, there was equipment and staff training for them to do something of this sort. And, and I'm just wondering, at this point, with the growth of our city, is it time for us to move forward, to maybe have some more specialized training for our staff to accomplish some of the things that we're farming out and paying i- an exorbitant price for? Or, um, is the price of farming it out less than training staff? But we may be caught in a spot at some point where, um, our staff needs to be trained and upgraded more and specialized things that, uh, of, of duties that we need to accomplish in our city. Uh, our, our city, acting city manager already mentioned, you know, the issues about chromium-six, water issues. Um, I'm also looking at housing mandates. You know, we, we have to be concerned about the shortage of water in the valley here, um, and how are we gonna accommodate water and building new houses? How does that mix work? Plus, the fact that the state of California has mandates on us in regards to low, very low, and very, very low housing that need to be built. Um, I think more recently, we submitted a water plan to the state of California, and it came back to us indicating that we needed to reduce it by, I believe it was twenty percent more, and maybe I'm not correct in that number. But it was, you know, we do have to re- reduce the water usage in Los Banos. So, you know, there's just a lot on the plate that we have here, and, um, the expertise that we need to move forward to do it, the chromium-six, you know, the, the, the state kind of won that lawsuit, and I think it's like ten parts per billion now that the state requires that we be at. And I think we were, what, somewhere between thirty and less than fifty? So, it is a problem that has to be resolved. We, we paid for a company to come out and evaluate that and kind of give us a dollar amount of what it was gonna cost to resolve that. And then, you know, you kind of lull and go to sleep on it and hope that it goes away. But while you're sleeping, that's when somebody comes out with a hatchet and puts it to your neck and tell you, you've got to get this done, and you got, you have until tomorrow morning to get it done. So, all these critical issues that we have facing us are, um, they're very costly, and we have to be cognizant of the dollar amount that it's gonna cost. have to be cognizant of the dollar amount that it's going to cost us and how we're going to fund this. The tertiary treatment, it's coming. When it comes, I don't know, but it's going to come. So I'm a believer in being as much of a proactive of dealing with issues like this, rather than to react to them, because we know that we have pressure on us. So I commend our staff for the hard work that they do, and you've got a lot of hard work ahead of you. And I just know that we all have to work together to try to resolve this and make sure that we can meet the things that we are mandated to do in the state of California, whether it's water or whether it's housing. So it's nice to have developers want to plop a lot of housing down in the city of Los Banos, but we've got sewer issues we've got to think about, we've got police and fire, we have water, there's a whole lot of other things that we have to take into consideration other than just a developer walking up here with a plan saying, I want to do this. I don't care whether they own the land or not. We still have these issues that we have to look at and consider. So that's basically my cry this evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Got a couple items here. First, again, I want to congratulate the finance department, Ms. Kim Tomas, Rosemary Soto, and Ms. Jennifer Conchella, and also Mr. Brink Khan. Again, eight consecutive years, that's a truly remarkable accomplishment, and really positions us well for the new shift in direction that we're taking. So again, thank you very much. I'd like to bring up something that I've been wanting to bring up for a while, but just didn't have the time, regarding our flags, our national ensign, United States flag. And there's a U.S. Code that covers the flag and use and display of it. And that's U.S. Code Title IV, Chapter 1, Respect for the Flag. No disrespect should be shown to the flag of the United States of America. The flag should not be dipped to any person or thing. The flag should never be displayed with the Union down, except as a signal of dire distress instances of extreme danger to life or property. The flag should never touch anything beneath it, such as the ground, the floor, water, or merchandise. The flag should never be carried flat or horizontally, but always aloft and free. The flag should never be used as wearing apparel, bedding, or drapery. It should never be festooned, drawn back, nor up in folds, but always allowed to fall free. The flag should never be fastened, displayed, used, or stored in such a manner as to prevent it to be easily torn, soiled, or damaged in any way. The flag should never have placed upon it, nor any part of it, nor attached to it any mark, insignia, letter, word, figure, design, picture, or drawing of any nature. The flag should never be used as a receptacle for receiving, holding, carrying, or delivering anything. The flag should never be used for advertising purposes in any manner whatsoever. It should not be embroidered on such articles as cushions or handkerchiefs and the like, printed or otherwise, impressed on paper, napkins, or boxes, or anything that is designed for temporary use and discard. Advertising signs should not be fastened to a staff or a halyard from which the flag is worn. No part of the flag should ever be used as a costume, athletic uniform. However, a flag patch may be affixed to the uniform of military personnel, firemen, policemen, and members of patriotic organizations. The flag represents a living country and is in itself considered a living thing. Therefore, the lapel pin, flag pin, being a replica, should be worn on the left lapel near the heart. The flag, when it is in such condition that it's no longer fitting emblem for display, should be destroyed in a decantified way, preferably by burning. And finally, guidelines for displaying the flag in public only from sunrise to sunset. However, the flag may be displayed at all times if it is illuminated during darkness. The flag should not be subject to weather damage, so it should not be displayed during rain, snow, windstorms, unless it is an all-weather flag. So I would suggest that we use bunting, which is what we have here in the center of the council chambers, that is more appropriate, longer-lasting, and doesn't require the application of a code. And again, less staff time, less cost to the city. Next item is, we've been talking to a lot of residents over the last couple of weeks, and some of the concerns that they asked me to bring up is the rapid, uncontrolled growth of housing, and the effects it has on the water table, and the effects it has on the police and fire department. As the city grows, their area responsibility grows as well. So the response times gets longer, residents get upset because the response times is later. So again, these things that we have to understand and have to manage, our growth in a manner which is, which understands and doesn't tax our resources, especially our personnel. Speeding, speeding, especially on Ward Road, San Luis Street, Snowgloos Drive, B Street, and Pelona Drive. Those are the main issues that I've got concern from our residents. Residents brought up a good point, we have a new development there in that area, and there's no traffic there, there's no complaints there, but it already has speed cushions. Yet the residents who are asking for speed cushions don't get them. Lastly, I would like to announce the traffic safety meeting. The Los Banos City has a traffic safety meeting, and meets the first Tuesday of January, April, July, October. So the next meeting is at 2:00 PM, city council chambers, right here, October 4th. So October 4th, 2:00 PM, city council chambers. Lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Wellman for his exceptional leadership. Mr. Wellman, as you know, is interim city manager. He could just sit here and just keep the lights on, but he's delving deep into some of these issues that need addressing, that have not been addressed for some time. And I'm very thankful for his leadership, his ability, and his experience. It's through his experience that he's able to network, and for example, the engineers that he networked with, I believe those were pro bono because of his connections, if you will. And you only get that with experience. And these are just some of the projects I'm working with, some of the projects we talked about. And again, this is all only in a matter of weeks. Roundwater, street paving, animal shelter, projects, fire chief, you name it, we're discussing it, and the information's being passed on to every city council member. Because again, if one city council member knows it, they all should know it. So again, I commend city manager, Wellman, for the excellent job you are doing for the city and for our residents. Thank you, Mr. Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Lomas, and myself. So I want to thank all the department heads, they did a wonderful job. I also thank the finance department, great job keeping us at the eight-year mark. Hopefully, we'll make it to the ninth-year mark. I had a thing here on the flags also. I wanted to look into possibly getting them replaced at least quarterly. The one that's right out beside the police department out there has actually tore completely up. You know, those flags are, so if we can get something taken care of on that one, that one would be great. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I know the, like I said before, the homeless, it's hard to swallow. And I hope we keep, I know we won't, I don't have to hope, we are going to keep looking for solutions to do what we can with the homeless. Other than that, I have nothing else further.
Yes, Mr. Protem and members of the council, you've got to be careful what you ask for. But I've tried to take notes here about the number of projects that appear to be priorities with the council, and some rather lively adjectives like exorbitant costs and stuff like that. So may I respectfully suggest that we will go ahead and schedule so that you can give your interim city manager some guidance as to what those priorities are. 12, 15 hours a day is not uncommon for me or for the rest of the departments. And I'd like to unpack some of this stuff so I can get your formal guidance as to what we should be working on. And so I'll have something on the agenda for, I think, what is it, the fifth is the next council session. Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved.
I'll second that. Aye.